...more money while at the same time taking money away from an immigration defense fund, you are opening up the door for more deportations and more police violence in Santa Ana. Now, there are two movements in the United States, the white supremacist movement and the movement of the people out here that are coming here to confront you today, the Black Lives Matter movement and the movement for real equality. You can choose to support us by rejecting this budget, which we do, we fully reject this budget, and create a new budget that includes a complete defunding of the police, a complete abolishment of the police, and actual protections for immigrants in Santa Ana, and actual care for the COVID-19 pandemic. This kind of budget is doing Donald Trump's dirty work in Orange County. You are allowing for the increased violence against minority communities by police and by ICE. And for that, I think you should be condemned, and all of you should resign from office right now. You have a choice. You either listen to us, or we will keep on coming back banging on the walls and windows of this building, and keep on fighting in the streets, and shutting down this city, until we reach every single one of our demands. The choice is yours, but we are not giving up.
I was born in Santana and raised in Anaheim. Santana Police Department has worked hand in hand with the Anaheim Police Department. You guys are equally as corrupt. You guys are the ninth most violent police department in the country, and Anaheim is the eighth, or vice versa. Either way, you guys are both corrupt. I stand here firmly believing that you need to defund the police and re-allocate that money into community services, including youth programs that do not serve the police, that do not serve the police like Pau. We need community programs that keep our kids off the streets like after-school programs. We need a high school-to-college pipeline, not a high school-to-prison pipeline. Like, you guys, it's very systemic. You guys at this point realize this. Your City Hall is closed, yet you refuse to answer our calls. Ring, ring! I am the call you do not take. I am here. You know what you're doing. Your time is up. Make the right choice. If we know justice, you will know peace. But until then, we will be here, and we will vote. And all of you will face justice, will face... You will all pay for what you've done to this city. And you too, baby, and you too.
Hello, my name is Emily Leard, and I'm a citizen of Orange County. The job of the police department is to protect and serve, yet the officers are eating pot and pawn shops, beating up people because of their turn signals, and leaving people in burning hot cars. If you think that giving them more money for more officers, for more weapons, for higher salaries will help your community, you are wrong. When police are using their badges for excuses to commit crimes, when they are getting away with beating people up, when they can illegally break into someone's house and get away with killing Brianna who is just laying on the couch, they are not protecting us and not serving us. They are serving themselves, and yet they are being protected. Stop funding the people your citizens are afraid of. Fund immigrants, fund education, fund minorities, fund the mentally ill, fund the homeless, fund anything that will actually help your community. In Orange County, Santa Ana has the highest taxes, yet you have the highest homeless population, you have the most violent police officers, you are clearly doing something wrong. This is a democracy. You are supposed to listen to what your citizens have to say, not ignore us. Dozens of people have spoken before me, and dozens are going to speak after. You need to listen to them, you need to listen to us, you need to listen to me. We need you to raise the funding for our community and not the police.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Jonathan Ryan Hernandez. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Santa Ana, and I'm from Ward 5, Artisia Pilar. Proud of it. I'm here today to ask you directly to oppose this ordinance. In adopting this ordinance, you are directly harming your residents that you were elected to protect and serve. You are upholding a system of white supremacy by voting in favor of increasing and allocating monies to a budget and to a service that has systemically harmed and displaced our families dating back to the 1960s. And you're doing it at the expense of taking away protections from our most vulnerable members of our community, our migrant community. This decision is not only inherently racist, it is irresponsible, and it is unjust. The system of why we have one in 10 kids that graduates college wasn't created accidentally. We have invested in this system historically dating back to the 1960s and 70s. I remember a time where I grew up in this city where Santa Ana's mission was to have education first. We moved away from that, and we made, and we put profit first, and we changed to downtown Orange County. And as a result, one in 10 kids graduates college. What happens to those other nine kids? We have these kids fall through the cracks because of irresponsible decisions like this. We have kids that are dying beside under-funded community centers like the community center in my barrio, El Salvador Park Community Center, where we had a young man get gunned down a couple of months ago. My friend Anthony Acevis got killed May 23rd at the Theo Lacy facility, where the police and the sheriffs knowingly knew that he had a mental illness, that he was schizophrenic. What they failed to understand was that that young man also went through the juvenile system, where they tested medication on young people like himself. What I'm talking about is that we have systemically created a system that is not only displacing us, that is murdering us, and that is putting our community second. This isn't a matter of right and wrong. This is about doing your job, and doing it without a pat on the back. People have a right to thrive and to live in this community, and to not have it come at the expense of your political interests. I ask that you oppose this decision, and that you stand with your residents in this community. People are dying out here. Let's get this together, and let's do what's right.
Hola, buenas tardes. Hoy quiero mencionar que están haciendo algo absurdo para el propósito cual muy poco está destinado para el fondo de defensa legal, ya que al quitarlo quedan desprotegidos el 46% de la población de Santana, ya que este recurso ayuda a las familias a no ser deportadas y no separar más familias. Todos ellos han aportado a esta economía de esta ciudad pagando sus impuestos, y es injusto que este presupuesto se vaya para apoyar a la policía y para pensiones de ellos, lo cual no se me hace correcto. Todos en la comunidad de inmigrantes residentes pagamos el 9.25% de impuestos en Santana, California, lo cual también se va para pensiones de los policías. Es algo sucio y bajo, cuando ahora más que nunca deben de apoyar a todos, y deberían dar más fondos, yo diría el doble del presupuesto, en vez de quitar la mitad de la defensa del fondo legal. Y disculpe, ya que no todos los policías son malos, pero la comunidad no confía más en su uniforme, ya que abusan de su poder y matan. Yo aclaro, no todos son malos. Para concluir brevemente, señor Pulido y señor Solorio, ustedes están gracias a que los pusieron ahí, y fue la mayoría de hijos emigrantes que ustedes mismos atacan a su comunidad. Ustedes son un claro ejemplo de traición a su cultura y su gente, y son caidores a sus padres, ya que también fueron emigrantes. Dejen de ser hipócritas con la comunidad y falsos, y falsos. Qué vergüenza, quien dejen de decir que apoyen a la comunidad, cuando realidad es la otra, ya que ustedes están ahí sentados gracias a ellos. Y serán ellos los mismos los que van a quitarle su cargo. A ustedes les mueve su interés, a mí, como mi pueblo y mi comunidad, me mueve la compasión de ayudar a mi prójimo.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mercedes. Today I want to talk to you about everything that is happening and that is absurd, for your proposal, that in fact it's being destined all the funds in legal defense, and I want to, I want you to eliminate that. Only 46% of the population in Santa Ana has receiving these resources and this help for the families deported, and to not separate the families anymore. Everybody had helped in the economy and to this city, and they're paying taxes, and it's not fair that this proposal is going to support their police and their pensions, and I think it's not correct. Everybody in the immigrant communities and residents, we pay 9.25% of taxes in Santa Ana, which also goes into for police pensions. This is how it goes dirty, and it's not right, and now we need to abolish that. I think that the double of the proposal, it needs to go half to the defense of funds for legal assistance. And please excuse me, not all police are bad, but not all, not all the community trust in your uniforms, and you're abusing your powers and you're killing. And I state, not all of them. To conclude, Mr. Pulido and Solorio, you are, you are here thanks to the people that voted for you, and the majority of children are migrants, and you said, and you are attacking them, and you're attacking your community. You are a very good example of treasure and to your culture, your people, your traitors to your, to your parents, because they were also migrants. Please don't be so hypocrite with the community, and be so false. You should be ashamed of yourself to be supporting this reality. You are here, you're sitting there, thanks to them. It's them who are going to take your places, them who are going to move your interest to my, to my community, to my people, in compassion to help my community.
Members of the Santa Ana City Council, according to the VERA Institute of Justice, over 153,000 immigrants reside in the city of Santa Ana. This 46% of the population also pays the highest sales tax in Orange County of 9.25%. Unfortunately, immigrants are the least supported by this city new budget. It's unfair and abusive to the vulnerable immigrant community to be charged more for something as basic as food purchases at the market, and then receive meager crumbs for their contribution. If 153,000 immigrants spend an average of $100 a month on food, and at the 1.5% tax rate increase, together they're contributing over $230,000 in tax revenue a month, and well over 2.5 million a year just for buying food in the city. To me, just to allocate less than 200,000 to the legal defense fund is a betrayal to 102,000 non-citizens at risk of deportation. The immigrant community of Santa Ana should receive at least 2 million in support through the legal defense fund, not a cent less, because the immigrant community buys more than just food every month. Any less is a slap on the face of the immigrant community. I am a resident of the city, and I am outraged at the legal defense fund has been cut off 50% when immigrants contribute much more economically to the city budget through sales taxes and other taxes. I feel that five of these council members value more the money of the police union, which is the largest campaign spender during the city elections, than the 46% immigrant population in the city. Money paid on pensions doesn't make our city safer, it only worsens the budget into more fiscal crisis. The immigrant community of the city of Santa Ana feels betrayed by this kind of budget, and also feels backstabbed by the city council members that appear at community gatherings in hypocritical smiles posing themselves as defenders of the immigrant communities that pay for their salaries, but at the crucial moments, they self-serve their own political agendas. We are not your joke, and even though immigrants cannot vote, be sure that the children of immigrants will vote on the next election, and will not vote for jokers that laugh behind their backs. Council members, please don't make your last names look bad by voting to keep the budget as is, because if you do, you will only prove right the popular saying in our community, which is that, quote, "The worst enemy of a Hispanic is another Hispanic." If any member of this council considers themselves as a descendant of immigrants, make sure you don't bite the hand that feeds you, or it will surely bite you back.
Hello, my name is Anna Gonzalez, and as a Santanera, who has been, who has resided in Santa Ana for all of her life, I have been able to see how our community has been a victim, to how you, as city council members, are handling our city budget without prioritizing our needs. We are here to demand that you invest in resources we actually need, not the Santa Ana Police Department. When my friends in other countries found out that schools in my, in my community had police literally in them, that's when I realized that the system you built is really messed up. I realize now that you need to bring counselors to these schools, not police officers. Cops in our schools make us feel like criminals when we are simply walking on campus. I should have learned about what college was earlier on, not ninth grade. Solorio, Viegas, and Nela, we are here for a reason. We are tired, we are tired, I am tired. I am here physically because I want you to invest in youth, which is stated on your vision statement on today's Basic City Council Meeting Information Form, likely sitting in front of you. Invest in our, in our education and homeless population and family unity. Stop giving these cops a gun in a short span of six months. This year's city budget plan should reflect upon what our city is demanding, which is to defund the police. If other cities can pull through, so can you. Stop turning a blind eye to what is being not only shown here today, but nationwide. I am here to fight for the next generation of kids that are coming into our district, like my two-year-old brother. They don't deserve, they don't deserve a system like this. Last year, Santa Ana spent $131.6 million on SAPD, $45.6 million on the fire department, and $3.3 million on community development. This is outrageous and ridiculous. Defunding the police means refunding social services. Know that when the time comes, we will be watching out to see who deserves our vote into our city council for the following year.
My name is Lindsay. Santa Ana Police Department was ranked the ninth deadliest police department out of 100 police departments in California. SAPD used more force than 85% of departments, used more deadly force than 70% of departments. At police shootings where police didn't attempt non-lethal force before a shooting was 69%. Why is it that 62% of homicide victims unsolved were Latinx? Could my family members be next? Citizens of Santa Ana are desperate for police reform, not police raises. The people should absolutely have a say in whether or not the police department gets a raise, because after all, they work for us, they serve us, they are there to serve and protect each and every single last resident. Why are they so selective with who they serve? Are Latinos and Black people exempt from public safety? Whose public safety I'll be really prioritizing here, because I, like so many others, feel unsafe around the police. If $9 million is going straight to SAPD, why my psychological tests, therapy for trauma, they go through biased tests? Those $9 million could easily go to rehab facilities, mental health facilities, therapy for kids, working through trauma, school programs, after-school programs, public housing. If you prioritize police over all of those community necessities, then we are not going anywhere anytime soon. We will be here. We are begging you to please redistribute those funds to the most vulnerable in our local society. Please reconsider the impact you have. All of us are asking for the exact same thing.
Hi, my name is Trina Nguyen, and I'm here to talk about the funding, just like everyone else. And I noticed just while that girl was talking, you guys decided to walk around and talk while we're talking, aren't you? Like, these are your jobs, you're supposed to be standing there, sitting, listening to us, instead of bickering to the next person next to you. But besides that fact, the funding with the police department needs to go to more educational purposes. There are kids in special education programs who are literally taught to stretch. Why the fuck, I'm sorry, why was I taught to, why was I taught to stretch? Like, that's pretty ridiculous. Why is it that in special education programs, the special ed kids are given hand-me-downs, hand-me-downs from the AP classes, from the regular classes? Why is it that special education programs, how come those students, how come the special education program costs more money than regular ed? Which I completely understand, but it's the fact that we're giving coaches as our teachers. I was given a head coach and an assistant coach. What are they going to teach me, to throw a ball? Like, that makes no sense.
Hi. First off, I'd like to pray and hope everyone is staying healthy out there, especially in Santa Ana. During hard times like these, we need to remind ourselves to stand strong together and take care of one another. I was born and raised here in Santa Ana. As a first generation here, raised by refugees of Cambodia, on default is already a struggle as my family didn't understand the ropes or the importance of the educational system, or American society as they just survived the genocide. We need to defund the police and invest in our community. We need to invest in our education. When I was in elementary, leading to intermediate school programs that meant so much to me growing up, like science filtrates, our music programs were suddenly budgeted or cut. Extracurricular activities are just as important as any other subject, as they can help a child express, explore, mold, and help learn more about themselves as they are growing. As a college student now transferring to university, it took me nine years, but I survived community college, and it was a struggle mentally, financially. Living in Santa Ana where housing is exponentially increasing every year, I had to work two jobs just to support myself, and I worked so, so much that I didn't qualify for financial aid or Pell Grants to help with my education expenses. We need to defund the police and invest in our community, housing, and educational system, where everyone has a chance to succeed and live comfortably. Not everyone has a quiet office space to focus on studying without any distractions, or a laptop, or even Wi-Fi in their household. We need more resources readily available, more libraries open with access to resources and available for longer hours. We need resources where we can easily have access to free counseling and tutoring, or simply a safe place to study at. We need to defund the police and allocate the funds to invest in our community to help us thrive, because we are the future.
Good evening. It's hard for me to see you. I hope you're looking here and listening. As public servants, you forget you can fool some of the people some of the time, you can't fool all the people all the time. You're in the hot seat this evening, but what will you do with your power tonight? Next week, what are you going to do with it before November? What will your legacy be? Will it make your grandchildren proud? Have you reached the ambitions your grandparents had for you? Have you thought of the ambitions of the boys and girls of your city? One library? Leaving kids without computers, without Wi-Fi, without affordable recreation? Could that be killing their ambition? By being reckless with $9 million, you are building your reputation, you're cushioning the bed that you will lie on. The people are talking. Because the revolution is being televised.
Hi, my name's Jane Smith. Sarmiento, Viegas, Solorio, Mendoza, Basera, Peñalosa, Pulido. I do not, I do not know what words to say to move you. I don't know if those words exist, but I would be remiss not to try to conjure those words as a fellow citizen of Orange County. I will only remind you that this is your opportunity to be more than a footnote in the history of the city's corruption and deferment of justice. You can be the change the residents of Santa Ana wish to see, the change that Black, Indigenous, and people of color residents, people of color residents have been demanding and been deprived of for centuries. Let us not forget that you work for these residents. It is as easy as a vote to defund the police.
Hi there, my name is Steve Gallegos. I want to say hello to those of you who I haven't introduced myself to, Viegas, Nela Mendoza, Phil Baserra, and Solorio. You guys can finally see my face. Hello? I want to let you guys know that this is really too little time to give your constituents, because if I divide all the agenda items, basically I have seven seconds to speak on any of the items, and per the Brown Act, we really are supposed to be given more time. At any rate, 55A, I vote yes on allowing the vehicles, vending vehicles on property. 65A, Pilot Park Host, seven days for one person might be too much, and I think a thorough background is required, because we don't want any kind of like pedophiles or anyone kind of, you know, watching our, our children. 65C for the charter changes, I want to thank Phil Baserra and David Peñalosa for really putting a lot of hard work into this. I think Solorio was there as well. Now, definitely I think there should be term limits for the city council and the mayor. You know, I think eight years is enough for city council, six years is enough for the mayor, if he hasn't already been on the council, it doesn't make sense to double-dip that way. There should be a lifetime ban. Also, for the city budget, obviously, as we know, there's been too much of an imbalance. Just to read you a quote from Sarmiento, he said, "There is inherent balance in the way we funded services here in the city." And that's not to speak any less of one department any better than the other, but when there is such a high, heavy disproportionate investment in one department to the expense at or at the expense of other departments, we have to ask ourselves, is it fundamentally fair? We understand how important public safety is, nobody diminishes that. I think, though, we also have to value other civic responsibilities we have as a municipal government. I really resonate with those words, because it is very, very true. And, you know, we're just creating an environment with more police, and we're creating an environment where we are creating more criminals rather than better human beings. So, it's just kind of like planting an apple seed and expecting a banana to grow. If you keep on planting the same kind of seed, and you give it the same kind of atmosphere, it's only ever going to give you one kind of fruit. So, if we change the environment, we change what kind of seed we are planting into our city, obviously, we're going to get what we want. So, thank you so much. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Hi, my name is Maria G. And I'm here to vote against the budget for sixty-five. So the reason I'm here is because I want to... So there's more programs for the kids, the budget to be used more on that, because the youth, they are our future leaders. Us, we're getting older, we're on our way out. We need to leave leaders here. And right now, there's no leaders. That's how I feel. I've been a resident for the last thirty-five years. I'm a property owner, a business owner. And I consider myself... I live in a beautiful city in Santa Ana. Why? I question myself, why Irvine and other cities like Irvine listen to their citizens and Santa Ana doesn't? We need to start doing a little bit of that, a little bit more. That's the difference that we have here. When they speak, their voices are heard. Santa Ana City Council and Mayor, you need to learn from them. So take pride in your city. It seems like you take no pride in your city. You're just here. But I think, based on that, I also believe sixty-five C that there should be term limits. I think when someone stays too long, it just opens doors for more corruption. And I think for the mayor, I think there should be only six years. For city councils, four years. Because if the President of the United States can only take two terms, I don't see why here they should make a lifetime career. I think it's enough of career politicians. You need to start listening to the citizens here. A lot of these people, like myself, I came from work. I'm tired, like some of you guys here, and I appreciate that. But a lot of these kids that sometimes people don't wanna listen to, they're our future. You have kids, they're voicing themselves for their kids, themselves, their kids, their siblings, even their parents. And one other thing, I'm so embarrassed that last time, when people were calling Hispanic people, they shut them all down. They didn't wanna listen to the Spanish-speaking people. And I think that's a shame, coming from a Hispanic background. I think that was like a slap on the face, and that shouldn't happen. Thank you.
All right. My name is Caesar, and I'm here to speak to all of you today, because you are all simply nothing more but sellouts to the police department. That's what you are. So all I have to say really is: Trash number one, trash number two, trash number three, trash number four, trash number five, trash number six, because you called our people animals, and trash number seven as well. When the people are speaking to you, you don't listen. Instead, you decided by a majority vote to fund the police even more. Change is coming, and we will get rid of you. Just so you know that. We're done with your lies, your corruption of power, and we're... The city's going bankrupt, and instead, you decide to fund the police even more. Police that are sitting... They're right here, they're right here, literally. And we, the people, are the rightful masters of both Congress and the courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow the men who pervert the Constitution. You are those perverts. Democracy cannot succeed unless those who express their choice are prepared to choose wisely. The real safeguard of democracy, therefore, is education. Fund education, fund the youth. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria. I have lived and been raised in Santa Ana, yet today is my first time speaking here in front of you, because I decided enough was enough. As a woman of color, I shouldn't fear for my life when walking past a police car. I shouldn't be afraid to call the police when in danger for fear of being marginalized as the criminal instead of the victim because of the color of my skin. It brings me great shame to know that the Santa Ana Police Department is the ninth alias in California. Knowing this, you still choose to reward them with forty-two percent of those city's budget. You should be punishing them, you should be defunding them. The police shouldn't be the one kicking out homeless people out of the parks when they have nowhere else to go. Women suffering domestic violence shouldn't be going to the police department only to be told to go home. Schools shouldn't be having police on campus eyeing the students as a potential danger. You should have people who actually want to do their jobs and actually invest in the community. You should have homeless shelters being placed. You should have domestic violence shelters and counseling and educational programs at schools to promote graduation rates. I ask you to invest in the community, families, the people outside these doors, to invest in me. Santa Ana has a great potential to thrive and be a community of change. So I please ask you to be a part of that change. Don't stand against it. Defund the police.
Hello, Juan Gonzalez, Santana resident. As a master student of public health and city planning at UC Berkeley, I understand the rights that our city's communities are entitled to in order to ensure a thriving and healthy future. Equitable access to parks where folks can engage in physical activity, access to the powerful written word that lies in the stacks of a library, and access to economic opportunity in the forms of supported small businesses and affordable, high-quality housing. As such, I again call on you as city council members to oppose the proposed 2021 general fund expenditure so that SAPD will not receive the lion's share of the city's revenues, with the diverted funds going to other truly essential departments, such as parks and rec, community development, and the library. In the context of not only the COVID pandemic, but also the significant financial deficit the city is expecting as a result, it is imperative now more than ever to invest in resources that will set the groundwork for a more healthy and financially stable Santana. Investments in the social fabric of our city, especially in youth, are ones that will yield immense returns. As an example, the National Forum on Early Childhood Policy and Programs found that high-quality early childhood programs can yield a four-to-nine-dollar return per one dollar invested. On the other hand, Santana has ranked in the lowest twenty-five percent of the most populated US cities with regards to return on investment of taxpayer dollars spent on police protection. The math is simple. Putting policing first means putting our city's overall stability in jeopardy. We cannot expect a marginalizing institution to solve the issues of the marginalized. The Santana community and the people within it are where the bulk of our city's budget should be directed. All eyes are on this council and will remain on this council to decide this city's future. From Hamilton the Musical, remember, from here on in, history has its eyes on you. And with regards to twenty-two A, I'll read something from the CDC website. Allow people who are living unsheltered or in encampments to remain where they are. Clearing encampments can cause people to disperse throughout the community and break connections with service providers. This increases the potential for infectious disease spread. Please vote against the homeless encampment removal services contract, as that could be potentially dangerous in terms of COVID spread across this city, both for the on-house population and for the general population as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luis Tonali. I'm here to urge this council to prioritize the budget to better housing solutions, better education, better public health programs, better outreach programs, to find out what the public needs. Dar y recibir, I was raised on that value. We have to reach out to our public, to our neighbors, to our friends and families, to see what they need. And I think especially outreach in my community is necessary. I come from a neighborhood that really needs it, Ward Two. We... I just don't see enough outreach coming out to us. And the people that live on my block, they... They're out, they're working tonight, not by choice, but because that's the choice that they have. That's what's available to them. And I need to see more of an effort... More of an effort to see improvement in our lives. And funding police means funding punishment. I don't want that. I want something better for my block. We've been here before to talk about this very issue. And I urge that this council do the right thing to reallocate the money to systems that will rebuild where it's necessary. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Silvia Hernandez. I live on the east side of Santana. Our concern, my neighbors, my family members, my friends, we all are concerned about the decisions you were making in the last months that affect us as a community. While the current pandemic is showing the real need of investing more money in the community, with your decisions, apparently, you are not considering the current precarious situation and the difficulties that this will create in the future. We currently have sufficient police force to accommodate to the safety needs, but our lack of affordable housing has become a more pressing matter as of right now. If we can't pay the rent, we might end up in the street. And then, what? The police will come and arrest us for being homeless, as we are seeing on these days and the past years. Is that the way that you see our future? We don't. We would like to have better future and prevent the need and guarantee wellness for all Santa Ana residents, with more decent jobs, affordable housing, and programs to work with the community. Nos preocupan las decisiones que toman, que han tomado ustedes en los últimos meses, que nos afectan a mí, a nuestra comunidad. Si bien la pandemia actual muestra la necesidad real de invertir más dinero en la comunidad, con sus decisiones, aparentemente, no están considerando la situación precaria actual y las dificultades que esto va a traer en el futuro. Actualmente contamos ya con suficiente fuerza policial, suficiente para satisfacer nuestras necesidades de seguridad. Pero más seguridad nos va a traer este que vivienda accesible, que se ha convertido ahorita en un asunto más importante y urgente. Vemos muchos jóvenes en la calle. Y si no podemos pagar el alquiler, podríamos terminar en la calle. Eso nos preocupa muchísimo. Hemos hablado mucho ahora que no hemos tenido salario y trabajo seguro. ¿Y luego qué? La policía nos va a venir a restar por no tener hogar, por no poder estar en el parque, por no poder estar en la calle? ¿Es así como ven nuestro futuro? ¿Es así como ven ustedes nuestro futuro? Sería mejor prevenir esta necesidad y garantizar el bienestar de todos los residentes de Santana con más empleos y viviendas accesibles. Buenas noches.
Son buenas noches. Mi nombre es Luz María Martínez. Soy residente de Santana. Estoy aquí para exigir justicia. Exijo justicia a las vidas negras. Exijo justicia a la economía mediante políticas directas que permita acabar con la pobreza de los residentes trabajadores de aquí de Santana. Exijo justicia porque lo que ustedes están haciendo es un ultraje. Ustedes, los concejales, administradores de finanzas y agencias policiales, nos hacen a la comunidad por medio de contratos sin la supervisión y consentimiento de nosotros, los residentes de Santana. Somos los que pagamos impuestos y que estos impuestos pagan sus salarios. Y a pesar de que nuestros salarios son de bajos ingresos, salarios mínimos, aún así estamos dispuestos a pagar el precio. Moral y éticamente hablando, ¿acaso no es un ultraje que setenta centavos de cada dólar son destinados a las agencias policiales y solo el treinta centavos sean para la comunidad? Eso es un ultraje para mí. Escuché a un concejal decir que no se puede reducir el fondo destinado a las policías porque hay un contrato. ¿Acaso es más importante un contrato que las vidas que mueren a manos de policías? ¿Acaso es más importante y más valioso un contrato que familias desempleadas, familias sin hogar? Familias enfermas, familias perdiendo a sus seres amados por el COVID-19? ¿Y por qué no hay suficientes recursos para la salud? ¿Acaso es más valioso un contrato que la vida del ser humano? La decisión correcta está en sus manos ahora de ustedes como concejales y administradores de nuestros recursos. Y la decisión correcta para mí y para la mayoría de la comunidad, si no es que toda la comunidad, es que se retiren los fondos a las policías y se reinvierta en la comunidad. Ya hemos mandado presupuesto, ya hemos mandado ideas de cómo se puede reflejar mejor la inversión para la comunidad. Gracias. Y también quisiera agregar que se me hace que ustedes están mostrando lo que es la discriminación. Ustedes están dentro, y nosotros estamos fuera. Eso es discriminación. Gracias.
Hello, good evening. My name is Luz María Martínez. I'm a Santa Ana resident. I'm here to demand social justice and economic justice. I demand justice to the life of Blacks. I demand justice to economic life by politics, direct politics, that allows us address poverty in residents and workers in Santa Ana. I demand that it's outraged that council members, administrators, finance, police agencies are attacking the community through these contracts, seeing the supervision, without supervision, consentment of ours, of the residents of Santa Ana. Morally and ethically, we're speaking, why is it outrageous that seventy cents of every dollar are directed to agencies, to police agencies, and only thirty cents to the needs of the residents? I listened to a city council member saying that we cannot reduce the funds destined to police because there is a contract. Is this more important, a contract, than the life of the residents? Families? And it's really sad that the tears of the lost other families of their homes due to COVID-19 and lack of medical resources. The list is very, very infinite. But I want to say today, only with this situation, because these families can be helped if you, as council members, take the right decision. I also like to mention that this is discrimination. You are inside, we are outside, and that's discriminatory. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll take my mask off. I'm Alberta Christie. I'm chair of the Historic Resource Commission. I'm here to speak on item number sixty-five B, the recommendations that the Historic Resource Commission is presenting to the city council. First of all, I'd like to thank Executive Director Mintai and the staff, working along with our attorney, Lisa Struck, and our city manager, Christine Ridge, in helping us formulate these recommendations to you. We came together in October of last year. The commission did under a work study because of the fact that we found out that we were lacking in authority in so many areas in preserving, which is the first part of the duties of this commission, of our historic buildings, sites, and sensitive areas. And that what we need to do is to come up with recommendations to more or less give us that authority or change ordinance in order to enhance our protection of these historic treasures that are here in Santa Ana. First of all, we like that's on your agenda for recommendation is to authorize staff to develop policies for establishing neighborhoods that will be identified as historically sensitive areas. We've identified nine neighborhoods for this designation and for the protection, not only of their home structures, but the characteristics of that particular neighborhood. Approve a heightened administrative review process Approve a heightened administrative review process for buildings within a historically sensitive area. This is what we're doing as far as establishing, recommending establishment of the new planning section for historic preservation section with the planning division. Authorize staff to prepare amendments to the Senate and the municipal code that would allow Historic Resource Commission the ability to impose condition of approval on historic application and increase the frequency of our meetings. And four, authorize staff to complete a comprehensive update on single-family, multifamily, and historic structures chapters in the citywide design guidelines. And five, authorize staff to prepare a citywide tree preservation and protection ordinance. There's nothing in there to protect on public and private properties the significance of these historic trees. So we do hope that you will approve these recommendations and strengthen the Historic Resource Commission's ability to preserve our historic treasures. Thank you so much.
My name is Daisy Gonzalez and I'm a native of Santana, who is also currently a pre-law student at UC Berkeley. I'm very upset with this council and with all our leaders here in Santana, and I'm here to tell you why. On July 5th, this was two days ago, this year 2020, two Santa Ana PD officers racially profiled me and violated me of my Fourth Amendment right. At approximately 1:00 a.m., they trespassed into my home, detained, and searched me without any probable cause. They yelled at me, "Come here", as they jumped into my front lawn and told me to put my hands behind my back. I complied and had the entire encounter recorded. As they found nothing on me other than wearing black attire, as I am today, telling me, "Am I a threat right now?" No, they refused to give me their badge numbers and fled immediately so I could not get their license plate. This type of harassment is unacceptable and unlawful. I am aware that I am only one victim with experiences, but many victims such as George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Tamir Rice, Ahmaud Arbery, and Andres Gordado have lost their lives due to extremities of this unlawful, unjust, and racist behaviors. Call it how it is. Thus, I demand that you all do your job as public representatives and help protect us by investing in our youth and community with resources instead of utilizing it to criminalize, incarcerate, and kill us. If not, then best believe I will do everything in my power, as well as everybody that's out there, to vote you all out. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Carlos Perea. I'm a board president for the Orange County Justice Fund. And just earlier today, I sent you an email to all of you with a letter signed by more than 25 organizations, telling you to restore the full funding for the Serious deportation defense program. I'm also here in support for the calls to the phone police. And it's important to note that residents of the city, young people, have called in the past two, three council meetings, telling you to stop funding the police department at the current level. And secondly, you have a lot of people today that have showed up despite the pandemic and even in this like circumstances. And we have to speak to you in a camera fall away from you to tell you that you have to do the right thing. So I'm not sure if all this, if people calling you to finally do the moral right thing to do is not going to convince you. I don't know what it is. I don't know what political interest you're responding to. I don't know who you have to please, but it's not definitely the residents of Santana because you're not prioritizing them. Also, it is incredible, incredibly a service to the community and mostly immigrant community in the city that you're considering slashing the funds for deportation defense program. This is a program that is crucial, that is needed for Santana residents facing deportation and detention. So again, calling you to completely fund the program and to not allocate additional money for the police department. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hector and I'm a resident here of Santana. I'm a young person of this city. We're here today to tell you we have had enough. We have had enough of this political corruption. We have had enough of the police killing us in the streets every single day. And I wish, I wish that I was up closer so that you can all look at me in the eyes and tell me that this is okay. It's upsetting to look through these glass windows, through this camera, to see the majority of you looking down, not even looking at us, not even paying us that simple respect. That's, I can't even put into words how angry, how upset I am at this moment. The youth that you heard speak here today are youth of your city. They're the youth of this city, they're the future of this city. And what you have to understand that come November, if you're up for reelection and you decide to approve this budget, you're out. It's plain and simple. Councilmember Mendoza, you just started. You're out real quick if you decide to vote yes. And that's the reality. Because young people of this city are tired. And Councilmember Sarmiento and Councilmember Peñalosa, thank you for voting no. But today, I ask that both of you do more than just say no. Convince the people to both of your sides to disapprove this budget, a budget that does not represent the needs of our community. A budget that for years has not represented the young people of this city. The mayor has been in office for longer than I've been alive. Do you all understand that? Longer than I have been alive. I have not seen this city move towards change since he's been in office and since a lot of you have been sitting up in the dais. So I ask that you do your responsibility, you do your due diligence as people who work for us, as people who work for the youth, as people that should report to us and ask us, "Hey, what do you need? What should this budget look like?" We shouldn't have to be coming to you. You should be coming to us. And you shouldn't be voting for a budget that is not reflective of what we need. You all need to understand that if we're ever going to get anywhere in this city. People outside of the city and even in Santa Ana continuously criminalize our youth. Let's stop that narrative today. Let's move on a path to change. You all have the power to do that. And if you don't do that today, then you're out come this November or when it's your seat is up for reelection.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Carvajal. I'm a lifetime resident of Santana and a community health worker here in Santana. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge those that could not be here, to engage civically in their community because they're either immunocompromised and could not be here and because the city of Santana decided that folks could not engage virtually, even though as COVID-19 infections continue to rise in Santana. I also want to remind you, like other folks have mentioned several times tonight, that SAPD is the eighth most murderous police department in the country. And in such an important political moment around the nation, it is important that we listen to those demanding we invest in our community and not in bottles of suppression, incarceration, and criminalization. As a tenant's rights advocate, I want to lift the reality that our community is about to face a tsunami of evictions as a result of unemployment due to the pandemic. The city of Santana has the power to alleviate the anxiety and hardship of community and invest in an eviction defense fund to protect our communities from the violence of evictions. We need a rental assistance fund that is accessible. Legal Aid Society is an organization that does not provide services to undocumented people. This is not accessible. We also need a rental assistance fund that meets the needs of Santana tenants. $500,000 helped 30 families in Santana. The city of Anaheim was able to invest over $5 million in a rental assistance fund. All of you can do better for tenants in Santana. We need to reenact our rent freeze. It makes absolutely no sense that rents are being allowed to rise in the middle of a pandemic when thousands of community members continue to be unemployed. Community members are being sent home and won't be able to pay their rents. All of you, none of you could protect the eviction moratorium. It ends on July 28th. That's not even the end of the month. We need to protect our community and we need to stop funding a murderous police department, a police department that is not for our people, that never has been for our people, and we need to defund SAPD.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Alexis Teodoro Nava. And I'm here not just as a Santa Ana resident, but I'm here to also provide supportive commentary on behalf of the Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance. The Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance is supporting all the points that have been put forth by the Santa Ana community, things like funding the Immigrant Legal Defense Fund one more time. It's really a shame that we have to come and argue about funding the Immigrant Legal Defense Fund, which is one of the primary things that was led by Santa Ana residents. I was part of that group. And yet we still have to come and argue the validity, the humanity of investing money where it's most needed. I think I've spent about seven years coming to council in different capacities, and the story keeps repeating itself. That means that there's a crisis in leadership in the city. And if there's a crisis in leadership, you need to listen to those that are stepping up in real leadership. And that is us, and that is the young people who are outside, who are also going to come testify and repeat that you need to fall on the right side of justice. I understand that you need to fund the police department, but you can fund them a little less because there has been an amount of huge population that I'm included, that my parents, who are working, were knocking in buildings in Irvine, and cannot come testify. We have to show up just so you can know that we are being really impacted. So it is not about making statements. Your vote will make a difference in our lives. And that is why I'm here, to plead to you that you reconsider approving this budget and that you wait a little longer and actually take the time to listen to the community and really understand what it means to fund youth, what does it mean to invest in youth. And if that means taking away a lot of money from the police department, then that's what that means. It doesn't mean that, you know, we're against this or that, but it really means that you're prioritizing the money where it's most needed. And defund the police, there's a reason why people are saying this in the city of Santa Ana. We're not just saying it just because it's the sexy thing to do. It's actually the necessary thing to do. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you're really reflecting your decision and that you don't approve a budget that does not include the community demands. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bumara, I'm Bumara Vicente. I'm a resident of Santa Ana Ward Four, and I'm also a community organizer in Santa Ana. I'm here to call on you to defund the Santa Ana Police Department and invest in the Santa Ana people's budget platform. This includes funding mental health services providers who are working with low-income, marginalized immigrant communities. We need to look into alternative responses to police instead of them responding to mental health incidents. This will save lives and money from the city. From 2016 to 2019, our city has spent over $11 million on paid bodily injury and legal fees. I believe that these fees should be paid by the officers who committed harm, not by the city. You act as if defunding the police is impossible and unjust, but you have been cutting and robbing the city's finances of police for years. This shouldn't be surprising when the majority of you all receive thousands of pay-for-play money by the POA to keep your seats and empty promises. We're in a racial justice, health, and budget crisis. Your own projections anticipate the city will be running a deficit of $20 million next year, growing up to a $35 million annual deficit in just two years. All of this coming right after we pass Measure X to fix a decade of budget shortfall. This mess can't be blamed on COVID or shutdowns. It's a matter of misplaced priorities and principles. Lastly, I think it's unfair that the mayor and some council members are not here in person when there are vulnerable elders that have been waiting outside for hours to make public comment, when people like the mayor have the privilege to be in the comfort of your home. What a shame. Do your job and listen to the community. Defund SAPD. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Lopez. First, I'd like to express how disappointed I am in the decision to force Santa Ana residents to physically show up today to express their concerns about their hometown. You know, from what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, not everybody's here, so I'm not sure why the expectation has been put on us to show up. Another, I'm here to also speak on item 19E and 65D. I read in the staff report for 19E that additional outreach will take place to address issues like environmental justice. There is a wide lack of distrust in the city's ability to do outreach that will be multilingual and accessible. I expect the city, in good faith, to reach out to the following organizations in a timely manner: Rise Up Willowwick, Orange County Environmental Justice, Thrive Santa Ana, Equity for All, Madison Park Neighborhood Association, and Joveness Cultivando Cambio. Our community members have been fighting for equitable outcomes for a very long time. Our community members have been protecting and enhancing our community assets. In order to create a sustainable city that promotes education and prosperity, our organizations need to be informed about the upcoming meetings in a timely manner. Those who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution, and we have been providing solutions for a very long time now. Please make it a priority to be responsible in your outreach. I am also here in support of the renewal of the deportation defense fund to continue providing protections for our families in need. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Selena Gallegos. And I want to start by voting yes on 55A to allow food vendor vehicles to serve on private property and city parking lots. As a member of this community since, like, I was born, that food vendors have always been a very big part of our community, so we need to let that pass. And as for 55B, to have the elections held on November 3rd of 2020 this year, I vote yes because we need to have this election fresh this year and not wait until next year so that, you know, you guys in hopes that people are going to forget about all the things they're advocating for today. And I vote no on 65A. We need more park rangers. I don't think we need someone living at Thornton Park. You guys also need to present more information on that. There's not very much information on that. We need more insight. As far as 65C, I vote yes. We do need to have term limits on the chambers because how is it possible that the mayor has been in his position since far before I was even born? And I think three terms of two years is sufficient. That's six years if you are elected for all three terms. And for 65D, I vote yes for you guys to revise it and also to revoke the vote in increasing the SAPD budget. We can use that money other places to restore, like restoring our parks such as Salvador Park, Jerome Park, and Madison Park. And for 85A, I want to thank councilmember David Peñalosa for enforcing masks, you know, to help the community so that we're safer. And I wanted to tell Phil Pracera, I'm from your ward, and I would appreciate it if you spoke up for your community because when you're up for reelection, if you don't start speaking up for us more, then we're not going to reelect you. And as for Juan Villegas in Ward Five, believe me, I know a lot of people in that community, and you haven't been doing much for them. Just take a look at Salvador Park and in what condition it's in. You need to start doing better. And as for everyone, thank you. And please, please, please do better. And Mayor Pulido needs to be here. If he cannot be present completely, then he needs to, you know, recount his position because we need someone who recount his position, because we need someone who's going to be present.
Sure. Hi, my name is Katie Newman. I'm a resident of Ward Four in Thornton Park. I'm also one of Councilmember Basera's residents. And I too would love to have you advocate more for our voices, and I'd love to hear from you. I have yet to hear from you and respond to any of the comments I've made thus far. I do thank Councilmember Mendoza for responding both on the phone and by email. I appreciate that you've been willing to actually have a dialogue. And in terms of the vote on the budget tonight, alright. So thank you to Councilmembers Sarmiento and Councilmember Penalosa for voting no. We hope that you will do that again tonight, and we hope that you will convince some of the other council members sitting next to you to do the same. We're all here, everyone that's spoken thus far. We're concerned about public safety. That's what we want. We're not asking you to defund public safety. We're asking you to create it, to remodel it. On June 23rd, in front of the Board of Supervisors meeting, it was a similar crowd like this activated young people out to voice and engage civically, which I hope that US council members are proud of. This has been so beautiful to see us engage like this. And you should be proud and you should be listening. And in front of that meeting, as I was waiting to speak with other community members, a good amount from Santana, there were counter protesters walking in flashing signals of white pride in their hand gestures. And some of those same people later put their hands on peaceful protesters in front of a line of the Santa Ana PD. This identity Santa Ana PD intervened or separate counter protesters and pro Black Lives Matter protesters. There was nothing done. I asked them if they knew what that symbol was. The sergeant or the commander that was there said that he didn't know that that was a white power sign, so that leads me to believe that there's either a problem with training or that there was a decision to not create more safety. So volunteers ended up enforcing safety out there that day. So in creating public safety, like everyone else that's spoken here today, I urge you to please look at the funding again. We need to fund the programs that work, our community, our libraries, recreation, education, mental health services, and please, please, please continue the deportation defense funds. We don't need you to cut that. We need you to fund it, please. Thank you for your time.
Julio Arana, Ward Four resident. I came to this country as a kid and have been a benefactor of a good education system that was once in Santa Ana. And hearing all these people talk about, I mean, I've never seen so many people turn up, right? And I'm going to give you a personal anecdote on how, like, you guys are so into this police budget and we're, you know, you guys do preach about keeping our community safe. I work as an agent. I'm a landlord in the city. I own a 100-year-old home. And I recently had to deal with the dumping assistance program in Santa Ana, right? Everybody can agree that the investing our community in homeownership creates safer communities. However, I had never met anyone that had gone in the program. So somebody reached out to me to help her out, and she had gone through the entire process of counseling and going through the preapproval process. But the level of arrogance, the level of incompetence that I experienced with the city officials, anybody that's in charge of this program, was outrageous. First of all, I was surprised that she actually went through and she could go for it and get it. But once we were in contract to get this property, we never, nobody ever returned our calls. Everybody was always backing, like they were just trying to save their asses, their butts, and it's so hard. You guys preach about community development and having safe communities, but I don't know where this money goes to. I've never met anyone that's gotten a down payment assistance program, right? So just to hear the level of, like, how people, you know, people are so concerned, and if you guys are really concerned about your community, I would urge you to restructure the program and really make it more available, increase the program, because people want these type of programs, and it's good for the community. So, I mean, I won't give you all the stats and so many people that showed up today. It was amazing. All this woman wanted was to give her little girl an extra bedroom, and the city officials that were in charge of this program treated her like crap and pretty much dismissed her. So it's unbelievable that this happened to her. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hi, hi, City Council. My name is Roberto with Resilience Orange County, but I'm also here as a community member from Santana. I live on the West End. I think it's despicable. I sent in comments earlier too, through ecomments, about the city's lack of inclusion and attack on democracy to include city voices and city perspectives during a pandemic. You know, I'm totally down to come and make public comment in person, but there are countless folks with disabilities and that are immunocompromised that cannot make public comment in person. So I ask that you institute phone-in public comments, you know, now. What does liberation look like? Universal representation, eviction defense fund, community lands in community hands, worker cooperatives, investing in youth, a world without police? The community has vision, but we're trapped in policy, politricks, thoughts, and prayers, pay-for-play, and it's hurting us slowly. To be ruled unconstitutionally, to be ruled out of existence, to be silenced with intentions to destroy both you and I. Our lives are bound together, each of us contributing to our own communal survival. Mutual aid, community defense is what we need, not cops. No budgets for SAPD. Can you hear it? The helicopters flying above us in Santana. If you see something, say something. Calling us against each other, mirrors of policing in our community, community self-policing, and there's a federal grant for that. We need to be reminded that this council continuously silences Santana youth. Your actions ignite white supremacists, gentrifiers, the police, and those who take violence into their own hands, labeling and restructuring the laws for themselves. Self-defense, stand your ground, police bill of rights to kill? We must put a stop to white supremacists, white fear, white violence, white tears, from the fruit that is orange and sweet. Rotten seeds, citrus husk, oily essence full of hay and chen, dirt that is full of lead, city violence, negligence from here in Santana to flit in Michigan, lead in our blood dripping down this skin that is brown. Drip, 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 best tasting water, too good to be true inside this blue cup of city violence never tasted so good, and yet I've never been so thirsty for justice. Let's cut that police budget, take away our dirty jail, abolish ICE and prisons and the police. But to say I'm not scared for this upcoming election would be a lie. Why cheating laws, dark money, bought votes, cop-loving, gun-bearing, surveillance-loving crooks can potentially take hold of our city? Or have they already? But to say that I'm not inspired by the youth outside is a lie too. They see through you. They are engaged. They are ready to vote in November as you begin to vote tonight on the city budget. Listen to them. Listen to their demands. Take action. Heed their call. Defund SAPD.
ACAB, all cops are bastards. Good afternoon, City Council. This is my fourth year advocating for the defunding of the police budget. And this is Sagrada, this is my fourth year being here as a young person. I'm here to continue to ask City Council members to listen to the community, to community members and young people. They all are asking to cut SAPD budget. No reform. Defund the police. Abolish them. Do you not hear them? Do you not listen to us? They march. They want to be heard. Hear us, not kill us. Remember that we voted you in and we can vote you out. All these young people are here watching you and ready to vote. SAPD is the most militarized department in California. How disgusting is that? What do you have to say to the officers that shot rubber bullets, that criminalized residents, that laugh on our faces and smirk when we call them racist? Murderers, pigs! They smile and laugh because they know we are right. They know that they are the racist people, that they are white conservatives, that they're under a white conservative system that only benefits them and white people. Nellida, you are my rep. You are currently serving in that goddamn seat. Do your fucking job. You talked with community members recently, and you listened to them, and now you want to act neutral? You want to meet them halfway? You want to still give funding to the police department? You siding with them? You're siding with the POA. You're siding with them. Listen to us. Hear us. See us. See us when we're crying. Listen to us when we're asking you to defund the police. Phil Basera, we legit gave you, we emailed you, Santa Ana People's Budget Platform, and you're still asking, how do we defund? How do we increase? How do we pay people's, young people's programs? Easy answer. Defund the police. That's your job. Do your goddamn job. Remember, young people voted you in. Young people are ready to vote you out. ACAB, all cops are bastards.
I'm Angel. I'm a youth in Santana. First of all, I just want to say, Phil Basera, you got me tooed. Yeah, you got me tooed. You shouldn't even be here. We don't want you here. Yeah, we don't want you here. Second of all, yeah, you're not supposed to be here. You got me tooed. And if you're going to vote to increase the police budget, you're trash. You're trash at doing your job. Whoever's going to vote to increase the police budget, you're trash at doing your job. You're failing at doing your job. You're failing at serving the future, the community, the people that live here. And I just want to mention to the cops sitting here and not social distancing, I just want to ask, is COVID not a thing anymore? Right here, you're all sitting next to each other. Is COVID not a thing anymore? Is that what we're paying them to do? To not follow social distancing guidelines and sit there? I'm just asking. Is that what we're paying them to do? Is that where our taxes are going? Is that where the money that should be going to the youth is going? Is that, is that what we want? Is that the money that the youth deserve going? That's a disgrace. You're trash. You're not even my rep, but you're still trash. You're a disgrace. I just want to say that the youth aren't getting enough money for programs that they need and they deserve. And when you ask Phil Basera, where are we going to get that money? I think, you know, I don't know if you're doing your job or, you know, you're just there sitting. Maybe you could use your ears and listen to the people that called and think, what were they saying? Defund the police. Come on, dude, do your job. You're literally an embarrassment. You're embarrassing yourself. You're trash. We need more money to fund youth programs, to get them the counselors they deserve. Defund school police. Defund SAPD. Thank you.
Hello, City Council members and Santana community watching and listening at home. My name is Jesús Santana. I am a community organizer with Resilience Orange County and also supporting residents from the Suliman and Actión Group. Today, I'm here to implore that you listen to the demands and priorities of our community. You run for office to represent us, the people of Santana, not for your friends at the POA. You ask for public input on these decisions, but you cancel our opportunity to voice our concerns via telephone? How absurd is that? We are here risking our lives because you choose to be naive. All of you know very well that Santana has the most coronavirus cases in Orange County. But despite that, the youth and community members are here risking their lives because we care about the way the city funds our programs and services. We know what we want, and guess what? None of these funds go toward the police department. We want you to listen to the people's platform by investing more in universal representation, the Immigration Defense Fund, rental relief for our low-income community, and in a tenant defense fund for those who are in danger of losing their homes. We want affordable and accessible housing now. Thank you, and I hope you listen to our demands.
Hello, my name is Carter. I still want to ask, how expensive is that helicopter fuel that you use every night when you go out and disturbing protesters? How about that flashy riot gear that you get all the time? You have to be an emo when it's set on the ground to not realize the priority you put on the city is mediocre. Your ignorance is what it's like to be a Santaneros astonishing. And it's a shame to see the injustice occur in peaceful protest. How long does it take to be a police officer? Six months to a year? That's ridiculous. How can anybody be prepared for that type of job? With that type, like, that time gap? Are you brain dead? Defund the police and reform it. Make broader requirements and make the police go through different training. We don't need this violence going on in our city. And the homelessness going on in our cities is very disturbing. I can't go walking down the street without seeing a homeless person on the street laying down. Just some of them are naked, some of them are like in really bad condition. Especially during this time of pandemic. Like, how can you be so ignorant to not see all the destruction on the street? Like, there's so many homeless people out there. They can't get a social security number, a card. They can't get an ID. How are they supposed to get jobs? How are they supposed to get better? There's no programs for them. There's nothing for them to live off of. They're just on the street, because you turn your backs on them. You're not funding the right things. You're just funding, like, money-hungry, like, fucking programs that don't, they don't need to exist, don't need to be here. Especially since all the cities around us are criminalizing our youth, thinking that we're all bad here, thinking that, oh, this is big bad Santa Ana, right? It's not true. There's a lot of talented people out here. I've seen so many talented people out here. But it's also a sad truth that there's so many homelessness around and there's so much brutality and so much injustice. Thank you.
My name is Laura Perez, and I'm a proud resident of Santa Ana. I am here today to ask for City Council members to shift their votes in the new city budget that will be given millions of dollars that were promised to our youth through Measure X, to a police department that has proven to not be effective in their field of work. Invest in the community that lives here, not the parties that walk away with hefty paychecks at the expense of criminalizing our community members. Invest in our youth programs that will allow our future leaders to thrive in higher education, only to return back to Santa Ana and fill those seats that have been bought for you through special interests. My husband and I showed up today to support our youth after one of our own community members made a call-out for support from adults in our community. Hector, I am so proud of your efforts today. To make a call-out in the middle of a global pandemic and to hold our police department and local government accountable is amazing. I am confident and hopeful that our city is in great hands because of natural leaders like yourself. Keep fighting this fight. You're not alone. As long as I'm alive and residing in this city, we all call home. To our youth outside, at home, and for those many generations that are still to come, don't be afraid to hold your city representatives accountable. Call them out if you see them in public. Call out David Penalosa when he calls you animals. Call out the mayor when his face is buried in his cellphone. Call out Villegas when he lies to your face and fails the war that he represents. Especially right now, that his zip code in that ward has the highest cases of COVID-19. has the highest cases of COVID-19. Call them out especially when they sell their souls to developers and the POA. Call out our city manager, who makes almost half a million dollars at the expense of our community, lives in South County, and mandates city curfews to oppress our youth when they are trying to get the word out for black lives, for brown lives, for indigenous lives, for immigrant lives. Don't give up the fight. And for every single council member that either hasn't blocked me on Facebook or sees me and looks the other way, I hope that once district elections come, that our youth registers to vote and signs up their families to have their voices be heard. Thank you.
Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And I want to bring it back to the city council. Madam City Manager, would you like to make a presentation of any thoughts you may have? And then we'll bring it to council for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, before the city manager takes the floor and addresses that, I just had a question on the process.
Go ahead.
And, you know, I know that, you know, first, we wanted to make an in-person public comment section available because we were having some technical difficulties. And at the last few meetings, you know, there was a delay in people speaking and being heard, and some people were cut off. So this was an option that was presented to try to cure that problem, to have people come in and speak in person in the vestibule in the lobby that was here. And then we had a surge, as you know, where Santa Ana was considered one of the hotspots in the county along with West Anaheim. And then we had the governor's recent executive order basically stating that he is recommending that we don't have folks gather. So, you know, my concern is, and I'm disappointed that we didn't have an option available for people to phone in. I know that it has some flaws. I know that it has some defects. I think we should be able to cure those, but I'm more concerned about maybe compromising our state funding because the governor was clear in his directives to all local governments that we have to make a good faith effort to make sure this virus doesn't continue to spread. And to the extent that we have folks that are disabled or have compromised immune systems and can't come, we're basically limiting their ability to address us and their opportunity to be heard. So I know we received some letters from the ACLU and others calling that out. So I'm just concerned. I know that, you know, I spoke to the city clerk, I think, late last week when we saw the governor's order come through. I think it came through on Thursday. But, you know, look, we have to be able to figure this out. This pandemic isn't going away anytime soon. I want to, you know, call on our IT director to make sure that, at least from my point of view, we have to figure this out because this isn't something that's ending at the next meeting. If we can't figure it out, let's find some help. I think this is a COVID-related, you know, cost that we could recover. So, you know, we just have to somehow understand that people have to be able to participate remotely for various reasons, public health reasons, accessibility reasons. But I just think that we have to make both of these options available. This just isn't acceptable because this is the quintessential town hall. And when we prevent people from addressing us, especially because we're discussing a topic as pervasive, as important as the city budget. Look, I'm just, I just think that we're a better organization than that. We're the county seat. We're a large city. We should have resources at the ready to make sure that we can handle this volume of calls. So I just asked the city manager, you know, the city attorney, and the city clerk, and the IT director to please work together as a team. I'm sure that all of us don't want to prevent anybody from being able to address us. Some of the things we're listening to are not easy to hear. That doesn't matter. This is their chamber. This isn't ours. This is, you know, the people's house. So, look, that's all I wanted to say. I, you know, I just don't know how we can't figure it out yet. This has been with us for a few months. This is going to be with us for an indefinite period of time. So I just wanted to mention that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a quick comment.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Protown.
I just want to thank our city clerk for doing the best she could on this and the IT director and everyone else on staff. This is, there is no solution to this. And I understand that when we had the phone calls coming in, that wasn't working out very well too. And it was something, but there were still many, many complaints coming in that people weren't getting through. You know, it's not the clerk's fault. It's not the staff's fault. They're really, really trying hard. Yes, the governor's orders came in at the last minute. And you know what? People have limitations. They're trying to figure this out. And it's still not perfect. And we're going to continue to work on it. But I just want to thank the clerk for her good work and diligence and trying to make this, you know, as best as possible for everyone. And I appreciate everyone that came down here today to speak.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Penialosa, if I can.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say that I also agree with Councilmember Sabiento. I think we're right. There is no solution to this pandemic currently that we see. But the solution that we could do right now as a body is just have options available for the public to address us. That is the concern. And that is, you know, it's, I'm not as polished as Councilmember Sabiento, but it's irresponsible. And it's, we're doing a disservice to our community by not allowing phone-in comments. We should have multiple options available for them to address us because this is their chamber. And we do, we are public servants and work for them. So I don't know if, I know it's not perfect. I know there's a lag in the system, and that's why we were getting missed calls. But I mean, that's a perfect solution to me is, you know, as soon as the city clerk announces, you know, lines are now open for public comment. If you wish to speak, press nine or whatever it is. Let's wait two minutes, three minutes, for callers to start trickling in because there is a lag in the system. And that will give enough time for the speakers to start popping up on the clerk's screen on this end. So I don't know, Madam City Attorney, if that's something that, I don't want to 85 an item for the next city council meeting because that just puts it out another month. But is there like, because it's, there's a pandemic and there's an emergency, I forget the term you used, but can we call an emergency 85 item now to address public comment at this council meeting? Madam City Attorney? I know for the last, at the last council meeting, we did an emergency executive order for what it was for, but it wasn't on the agenda and we were able to do it. But it just required a majority. How can we do something like that in regards to public comment?
So the Brown Act would allow the city council to add an emergency item or urgency item to the agenda when you can satisfy two conditions. One, did the issue come up after the posting of the agenda? And is there a need to take immediate action? In terms of anything about public comment, I would look to the city manager to accept any of your feedback, to maybe offer suggestions. I don't, this is an urgent issue in terms of the public, whether you need to take immediate action now. I believe that your city manager may be able to address some of those issues with the feedback that you provide her. So it would require a supermajority vote of the council to add an item to the agenda. And it would be, you would have to make those individual findings.
Okay. I just personally don't like how this has been carried out. You know, we announced to the public on Thursday that we weren't going to allow phone-in comments anymore, only in person. But we also mentioned that we were going to have outdoor seating available for the people to watch the meeting. So I told, you know, the platforms I use that we were going to have seating available for them. And then yesterday, like 5:30 PM, there's a nexo saying that there won't be no seating and emails encouraged. I mean, we shouldn't be, I know none of us have dealt with the pandemic, but it's important that we really address the fact that the public needs to be able to address us. I know, kudos to the clerk's office and the city manager's office. We are one of the few cities in the county that has even allowed live comments this entire time. I know cities like Anaheim only do email, and that's it. So, and cities like Irvine as well only do email. We are always going above and beyond to accommodate. But, you know, we should be the leader. We should be someone that the county could, other cities in the county could look at and say, you know what, Santa Ana's doing it. Why can't other cities? So during a pandemic and a public health crisis, we should be able to allow multiple options of public comment. Those are my two cents.
Mayor Pulido, this is Councilmember Mendoza.
Okay, Member Mendoza, please go ahead.
I understand that we cannot make everyone happy. However, the process that we used tonight was to protect the public. We're not separating them. We're not trying to disrupt their comments. This was merely to protect them, and that is why they were in the lobby. I know that it would be much more convenient for the public to call in. However, there has been a disadvantage because some of these public comments have been from people from out of state, maybe even out of the country, as far away as London and Australia. So that's not fair to our public. Our residents deserve the truth. Our residents deserve for the public to state their true names and not impersonate city staff. So by being here, I think in person, it really puts the speaker, I'll notice that we need to have your name because we're going to have you on video. The other thing is that, and I agree, it would be more convenient for the public to call in. However, they were complaining about that last time that they had to wait on hold for four and five hours and that some of those calls were dropped. So then here again, we cannot please them either. Today, I found it much more convenient for the public. They only waited a few minutes in line for their turn to speak. And we were done much faster than the last time when we had so many people on the telephone. So we are here to accommodate the public, but please be truthful. Please be professional. Please do not use foul language. Please be professional. We are listening to you. We are your voices here on the dais. So please extend the same courtesy to us. Thank you, Mayor Pulido.
You're welcome. Why don't we just all continue to think about this? And maybe we can come up with something. I will tell you this, in Riverside, they recently had a nine-hour meeting. And not that we should be deterred by that. But in Austin, Texas, they have meetings the last two days. And I don't think they're getting any real business done. So we have to seek a balance between listening to all that want to speak and doing the business of the people. There's a lot of business that has to get done. So for right now, what I'd like to do is ask the city manager, please to present any thoughts she may have as it relates to the budget and the discussions that she's been having with council members. And then let's bring it back to council, please, and see where we can go from there. Madam City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The item that you pulled up is the budget, adopting the citywide budget. It's item 65D. The item before you is actually the second reading of the ordinance to adopt the citywide budget, which totals $670 million for the fiscal year, which started July 1st and concludes on June 30th, 2021. The ordinance was first successfully introduced at the June 16th council meeting. And as permitted by our charter, the council does have the opportunity to make non-substantive changes to the budget in line with the discussions on June 16th. Any changes you direct will be incorporated in the final budget document. To facilitate the discussion, we have a brief presentation of additional requested information and potential changes for your consideration based upon the discussion at the introduction. Our finance director will present these items along with one slide presented by our fire chief. And then I will finish the presentation with a proposed spending plan for our additional CARES money that we will be receiving. So with that, I'll turn it over to Catherine.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We'd like to move on to the requested information segment of this presentation. There's some additional information here for the fire program. During the last meeting and the meeting prior to that, we heard quite a few public comments about the large increase for the police department. I do believe that some of the callers were combining the police department increase with the fire program increase. And so I just wanted to offer some clarity here. There, this is a breakdown of the fire program increase, which includes the Orange County Fire Authority, 4.5% increase of $1.9 million, and increases for ambulance and EMS billing. So we have a full breakdown here of the $3.8 million increase. With that, we would like to go ahead and allow Chief Henry to present some fire call statistics.
Good evening. There were some questions that came up on calls of service, and I wanted to address that scenario on some of that. So we have a PowerPoint slide here that breaks down our service in the department here and within the city. So as you can see, a majority of our calls for service are for medical aid calls, people calling us for car accidents, heart attacks. You asked a question about how many are the paramedics are needed versus the non-paramedics. As you can see, the majority of our medical service calls, which, you know, roughly are about 90% of our calls for service, result in the paramedics being summoned and, you know, treating the patients, about 83%. I think it's important to understand that out of our entire agency, the big hook-and-ladder trucks, we have about 22 of those across the 24 cities that we serve and the unincorporated. Two of those ladder trucks are the busiest in the entire county or in this city. I also want to point out that Santa Ana has 40% of the top busiest units that serve, again, in the county. And the reason why I want to bring that up is so that you understand that last year, we had 35,210 emergency responses in this city. And so I just thought that was important that you look at that in totality of the 120,000 calls that the Orange County Fire Authority processes every year. And so I think that's important to understand what some of the monies that are going there. There are other types of calls there that are structure fires, dumpster fires, hazardous materials calls, all those different things like that. And I'm available to meet with any of you if you have another time when you'd like to sit down. And I know some of you are written with me. And so you know the population that we serve and the types of calls that we go on. And so I'm available for any questions now or later, if you have any.
Mayor, if I may, this is Councilmember Penialosa.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
I just wanted to thank you, Chief Henry, for this information. There's, just wanted to make it clear as well that there's no doubt in my mind that the, you know, Orange County Fire Authority is servicing our city, especially after this past weekend. I know Saturday was very busy for both our police department and the fire department, and very thankful for all the service that you guys did over this weekend. But just for future, my only issue was that we didn't address the increase at all. So you have members of the public bundling it up to the police department all into one, and we should be transparent about where all these increases are going to the detail, to every dollar. I mean, it is what it is, but thank you so much for this. Thank you for all the hard work.
Absolutely, and I can tell you that we've been in conversations, and we will ensure that we present what Ms. Downs just covered just a little bit ago. All right, thank you.
Okay, so the next segment of this presentation is budget options for your consideration. As discussed previously, the city council can make non-substantive changes to the budget tonight and still have the option to adopt it. So we heard some requests for CDBG funding for both rental assistance and mental health assistance. We do expect to carry over $800,000 of CDBG money for rental assistance, unspent during the current fiscal year, carrying it over to our upcoming fiscal year. But for the mental health assistance, Community Development Agency staff was able to identify an additional $60,000 of CDBG money that can be programmed for mental health assistance. And so if the city council directs us to program that money tonight, then we would recommend, our staff recommends, these three different organizations receive allocations of $20,000 each. Do we have any feedback from the city council for this option?
I would like to see that option.
May I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question for the city manager, and I guess Catherine, not sure exactly how the, it's kind of hard to just talk about this one without looking at the other pages that are still to follow. So are we going to be stopping after every slide and ask for thoughts, or are we going to wait till the end?
Well, we have just a few questions in these slides for you, and I think it's probably best to go ahead and stop and take the feedback at that time.
I actually would recommend you move through everything so they see the totality of it, and then they can give us the feedback on which options.
Okay, that sounds good, too. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to the next recommendation or option for the city council to consider. Again, this was based on city council member requests. We've identified two programs in the police department budget that do not need to be administered by law enforcement. And so we identified animal services and crossing guard, the crossing guard contract. Animal services includes the $2.7 million county contract, as well as a half a million dollars of internal costs for both equipment supplies and three full-time staff. And then the crossing guard contract is just a contract, no staff, and that is a little over $800,000. We would have the animal services program moved to the planning and building agency, and we would have the crossing guard contract moved to the public works agency. So again, these are two programs identified that do not necessarily need to be administered by law enforcement. So if the city council would make that decision to move those two programs out of the police department, I have a reconciliation for you here. So our original proposed police department budget was $140.7 million. I'm sure that some people might remember that number. We were recently able to obtain labor concessions from the Police Officers Association totaling $2.3 million, which is on a separate agenda item on tonight's agenda. So our updated amount in the budget ordinance to adopt for the police department is $138.4 million. Now, if city council makes these decisions to move these programs out to the other departments, that would decrease the police budget down to $134.4 million. If we compare that to the 1920 budget, you'll see that that's a net increase of 2.2%. We do have some other program operations for consideration. Now, these ones would not impact the adoption of the budget tonight, but these budget options would provide us with direction for carryovers that we would bring back to the city council for approval in September. So the first is cannabis tax set aside for youth. Now cannabis tax is a general fund revenue that's been set aside for youth services. Our 2021 proposed budget includes $3.4 million for a youth allocation from this cannabis tax set aside. We also have an allocation for the current fiscal year that we just wrapped up, fiscal year 1920. Due to the youth commission review process and COVID-19, as much as $3.6 million of the 1920 allocation is unspent and available for carryover. So the question for the city council tonight becomes whether or not we should use some of that, a portion of that available set aside from 1920 to carry over to 2021, our new fiscal year, and partially use it for the youth commission to conduct a request for proposals process for the spending of that money. So that is one idea that we have for that. We also have a artist's grant program we heard from the public and some city council members on. Our prior general fund set aside for the strategic plan included $65,000 for arts master plan programs. Now, this is exclusive of the staffing component. This is the non-staffing piece of the budget, and $100,000 for art events in public spaces. So our proposed general fund budget does not currently have the availability to continue funding these programs, but we've heard loud and clear that they are important to quite a few people in the community. So the question before you tonight is, if we are able to identify fiscal year 1920 general fund dollars that are available for carryover to 2021, should we at least partially restore the arts master plan programs for fiscal year 2021? So again, these two decisions would not affect your adoption of the budget tonight if you choose to do so, but it would be helpful for us to get this additional budget direction from the city council. In addition to that, we have some revenue enhancements for consideration. We are always looking for ways to ensure that we can continue to provide public service. And again, these revenue enhancements would not impact your adoption of the budget tonight, but again, it just provides us with direction for placing matters before the council at a future date. First is the option for naming rights revenue. So naming, some cities have done this. Naming rights of landmark amenities have the potential to generate revenue for the city, but the best practice is to develop a formal process to both protect the city and maximize the benefit. So we would seek direction from the council as to whether or not we should proceed with developing this formal process to bring back to you at a later date. The other revenue option that we have is for digital billboard revenue. The Planning Commission recently conducted a work-study session regarding an update to the billboard ordinance, and this update could allow for digital billboards. There has been six areas identified on some of our local freeways, and the next steps would include public review of proposed ordinance, conducting outreach and public hearings. Although we don't have a specific question for the city council tonight, this would be a perfect time to provide initial feedback so that we know we have some guidance for the way forward. So with that, I think that I would like to turn this over to the city manager to touch on the proposed CARES Act spending plan. Now, this would be for the $28.6 million that the state has allocated to us out of these federal CARES Act dollars.
Thank you, Catherine. So we have been officially notified of the approval of an allocation of federal CARES money directly to our city with the state of California's adoption of their budget. I know this was a result of our mayor, who did work tirelessly with other mayors to make this allocation a reality. So for that, thank you, Mayor, the money is desperately needed. We are anticipating the receipt of approximately $28.6 million. These dollars can only be spent on COVID-19-related expenditures allowed per the U.S. Department of Treasury guidelines. We have already filled out the needed certification to receive the funds, and upon receipt, we want to quickly put those dollars to work. The timing is critical, as our community has some of the hardest-hit areas due to this pandemic. We have reviewed the guidelines. We've received input from several of you, and based upon our demographics, our number of positive COVID-19 cases, the challenges faced by our residents with paying bills, getting quality healthcare, and complying with recommended isolation, we have drafted this proposed spending plan. Our proposed contract with UCI will focus on seriology testing and modeling to better predict the propensity for a surge in areas of our city while also assisting us with healthcare guidance. Sanitization would cover high-risk areas such as bus shelter, park amenities, crosswalk buttons, et cetera, and we already have identified a partner to make this happen. We are proposing a very large amount of funding to go to help the residents severely impacted by the virus in the form of rental assistance, bill assistance, contact tracing, testing, and isolation solutions. We have heard from the local community clinics the need for more funding to carry out their increased need of services. We have an amount dedicated for outreach and education. We really believe this is critical to slow the spread in our community. And there's additional assistance for proposed four businesses that have now suffered again with the retraction of the economy. We also would like to assemble compliance ambassadors that we can spread throughout our community that would distribute masks, ensure businesses are in full compliance with the state guidelines, and protect employees and customers both. And then lastly, we do have an amount proposed that would reimburse us for all the unanticipated expenses that continue as a result of this pandemic. I look forward to your inputs on this proposed spending plan and any further changes you would like us to make. What we would plan to do is, once we have receipt of the money, we will return to you for appropriation of it and start deploying the funds out to help the community. That concludes the presentation, and I know Catherine and myself are both available for any questions or any direction that you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Sarah, and then I've got a comment. Go ahead, please.
I just have some questions. So can we go back to Slide 11, please? The cannabis tax set aside for youth? So I guess my first question, and it's like deja vu, because I feel like we've had this discussion already. So first of all, what youth commission review process are we talking about? Because I think last time we had this conversation, it's not codified anywhere. I don't believe there's a resolution on file somewhere that this council adopted that said this money can't be spent until it's been reviewed by the youth commission. I believe it's probably been kind of more of a cursory direction. While we do value the input from our youth, we keep talking about it as if it's a conditional use permit process. It's somewhere codified in the municipal code. So can you just clarify for me? Is there some sort of codified process?
No, Councilmember. It was a recommendation when you made the allocation for one-third of the cannabis money to get input from the youth commission, which the Parks and Rec Department did, and they have a large number of programs that they are in process working on, but there is some excess money above that. And there was a recommendation or direction received on the June 16th meeting that maybe some of those monies that's not already programmed could be used with the youth commission's assistance, once again, to deploy requests for proposals and seek additional services to the youth in the community. So that's why this item's before you.
So the youth commission's going to manage an RFP? It's kind of like a life-learning lesson for them?
The staff would be assisting them greatly.
I'm relieved at that. The other issue, so where did this extra money come from? Because it sounded like, from what I believe our Parks and Rec Director told us, that money's been programmed. So again, it feels like deja vu that now we've got the money, then it was programmed, and now we're back to, we have the money?
Well, the set aside for 1920, the first thing that happened was the youth commission met to make some recommendations for the spending of that money. So none of the 1920 money got spent for a while because of that youth commission process. Then after that, the Parks and Recreation Department was gearing up to start the programs that were recommended by the youth for spending that money this year, but then COVID hit, and so the programs were not able to get off the ground. And so as an alternative, the Parks and Recreation Department considered that this $3.6 million could also, as an option, be diverted to replace the, or to put in synthetic turf at the soccer complex. So that is something that they were thinking of proposing, and then there's this concept of, as an alternative to that, is to allow the youth commission to have an additional hand in this process by having a request for proposal process.
If I could, could I have Lisa come up? I just, help me reconcile the difference here, because I feel like I walked away from that last meeting feeling like we, you had worked with the youth, and yes, COVID was an impact, and yes, we couldn't convene a conventional youth commission meeting, but it sounded like you and your staff had worked with them to try to get input, but you guys, I remember seeing the memo that said you had programmed the money. In fact, I think at one point, was it December, the council had a receipt and file of a litany of items that you and your staff had put together that you were moving forward on. So is this money that we're talking about here on this slide, are these dollars that are above and beyond what you presented to us?
Yeah, so December 17, 2019, there was a recommendation for items to be spent on the, sorry, on the cannabis funding, and for 2021, we also added some items. And I sent an email out to the, a memo out to the council, actually, yesterday to update everyone. So everything on that list equates to about $6.4 million, because we were proposing to have the synthetic turf at the Dan Young Soccer Complex instead of '21, '22. We were going to move it to 2021. So yes, everything in the memo is correct.
So then, this money here, I guess if we were to push back the synthetic turf at the Dan Young Soccer Field, then we would now have this money available for the youth commission to have an RFP exercise?
Yes.
Okay, but again, just to clarify, this money, for all intents and purposes, has been programmed, but now we're starting to think about maybe holding off on resurfacing the field over at Dan Young?
No, sir, that was not the intent. Even with what Lisa has programmed, which is a substantial amount of youth programs, there still is an excess between what we anticipate available for 2021 over what she has programmed. I believe you mentioned yours totals, did you say $6.4? And we're anticipating available funding closer to $7 million.
Okay. I'll just say, I mean, I'm happy to hear this. I mean, it's great news that we're having more funds come in for our youth, but at the same time, I kind of left the last meeting feeling like we got to a certain place, we were comfortable with staff and their work with the youth commission to come up with the list of items that this was programmed for. So I mean, my thought would be, if Lisa wants to reach back out to the youth commission, but I mean, to put out an RFP, I feel like just doing an RFP alone costs money, and we've got staff that can professionally assess it and in collaboration with our youth commission can determine what we need. And I think our staff's doing a fantastic job of providing these services, so I hope that we're not going down the same rabbit hole we did a couple of weeks ago where we're starting to farm out our own city dollars. So thank you, Lisa. That's the only question I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, this is-
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Penialosa.
Go ahead, and then I've got a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So I guess I'll start from the beginning of these slides. Again, thanks to the fire department for that detailed breakdown. In regards to Page 7 of the CDBG funding request, I wanted to, and this is why I wanted to go through the entire presentation before I start asking questions, because it's kind of related to a couple of the other pages. So the $60,000 of available CDBG money for programs for mental health assistance, I'm no health expert, but I know that the healthcare is very expensive. So what can we possibly do with $60,000 in regards to mental health? I mean, is that something that's already been, because I know the county is a county health agency for the cities, and they have a lot of money for mental health that oftentimes, as we've seen with the county of Orange, they sit on for years and years and don't even know they have it. So when we're looking at things like completely cutting the artist's grant program, which is about $100,000, or $160,000, a hundred grand, actually, and looking at, we're appropriating CDBG money for mental health assistance, which is great, 60 grand, $800,000 for rental assistance, is there a way that we could, because all these things are great, and I want to fund them all, but something like the artist's grant program is an economic drive for the city and is used to bring in revenue, to activate all the often-dead space that we see in downtown, you know, art activation programs, murals, things that bring in revenue and bring in people to our city. So that's why I wanted to go through the whole thing, because I wanted to ask if we could, if we're able to use CDBG money for the arts grants, I know they were previously funded through the general fund. I know that I even mentioned to the city manager earlier today that I wouldn't mind giving up my discretionary councilmember funds of $10,000, not speaking for anybody else, but mine personally, in order to provide at least one or two grants for artists in our city. Are these things that- Are these things that could be done, Madam City Manager, versus, you know, shaving maybe, since we're already doing $3 million from the State Careers Act money for rental assistance, if we could take some of that or take some of the mental health assistance? Because I don't see us being able to, I could see that $60,000 being spent on a consultant for mental health services and then saying, coming back next year and saying, hey, the consultant we paid $60,000 for has these recommendations, they're going to cost us half a million if we want to provide the services. So, and that's, I don't see that funding anything, really. So can we go more into detail with that?
I'm sure. So on the, I'll have her put Slide 7 back up. You're absolutely right. I mean, we're not in the core business of providing mental health services, but we do have some programs that can certainly brighten the mental health of the youth in the city. So with that 60,000, we do know it's eligible to spend those CDBG dollars on the three areas that we recommended on the slide. So that is what staff is recommending the 60,000 go to. That's not to say that we can't find additional money for the artist grants. So typically, from about 2017, the city had spent between $65,000 and $70,000 on those grants, and it wasn't included in this year's budget. But on the previous slide, we are indicating that we are going to turn over every rock and try to locate the money so that we can partially, if not fully, restore that $65,000 to $70,000.
But it's not anything that we could use CDBG money for?
I would have to, I'm not sure if, I don't want to put staff on the spot to know if an arts grant program, probably structured in a certain way, may be eligible to CDBG. There would have to be some qualification setup for the artist that could receive it, because CDBG is intended to serve disadvantaged individuals and programs.
Well, and I know that a lot of the local artist groups in the city are disadvantaged artists, and you know, they're, and they help a lot as an economic drive for the cities, which makes sense, but I just wouldn't want to see it, you know, be a thing where it's like, oh, we're going to come back six months from now to see if funding is available for it and just have them out in limbo for six months, because it is a big economic drive for the city and our downtown.
Certainly, sir, if you wanted to with this, you could program the 60,000 for the mental health assistance, and if we're unable to locate at least 70,000 for the artist grant, you can direct us to use part of that 800,000 carryover to make up the difference for the artist grants, and we'll just structure it in a way that is compliant with CDBG guidelines.
Okay. Because, I mean, all these things, art especially, economic drive and mental health, I know that when, you know, I'm not much of an artist, but when I do feel that my mind's ready to explode, I like doing improv and going to Michael's and buying a canvas and art, because it's therapeutic, and all these things, you know, serve the same purpose, and it could serve other areas as well. So thank you for that. I would be supportive of going that direction. Other things that I had questions about was just the potential police budget realignment. I personally am supportive of seeing these move into the appropriate departments. I've always asked myself why the crossing guard contract isn't under Public Works and why the animal service isn't, I thought that would be under Public Works, Public Works as well, but it works under Planning and Building Agency. One thing, if we go down this route, one thing that I would like to see with this change is the app. I know currently, the city app, when people come across carcasses on our highways and streets, it's a sad thing, I hate seeing that, but we oftentimes do. I get them emailed, I get them, get Facebook tagged on them, you know, it's not the best thing to wake up to. And, but I used to tell residents, go on the app, you know, submit it, instead of sending the picture to me, submit it to a staff member that can make sure it gets picked up. But when you select that option on the app, it prompts you to call, and oftentimes, they get a voicemail, most of the time, so there's nobody to answer, and then they got to wait for the call back. Meanwhile, this poor cat or dog is laying there on the street. So if we were to go down this route, I want to make sure that that change, where we could submit actual cases, I want to say cases, not for little bodies, this is turning into a bit of conversation, but I want to make sure that that, you could do that through the app, and it could go to the appropriate department without having our residents have to call. You know, it's traumatic for anybody to come across that, and the easiest way that we could make it for them, the better. So those are my recommendations for that. Finally, police budget realignment. I'm, you know, happy with the concessions that the POA was able to come up with. And last thing was the revenue enhancements. I am also supportive about naming rights for ideas of revenue. Aside from the, you know, I see the water tower and the Santa Ana Zoo and the Eddie West Field is pictured on there, but I want to make sure we look at everything. We look at our parks, we look at the soccer fields, you know, we have a lot of soccer fields that get heavily used all year long. That could also be an economic drive for naming rights. I want to make sure that if we go down this route, the revenue generated from these naming rights of these places don't go into the general fund, or I would like to see them earmarked to stay in that, you know, park or to stay in the zoo. I know the zoo is also, needs a lot of funding, or whichever area we're using to generate that revenue, that it goes back to that same department, most likely Parks and Rec or Public Works. Also supportive of the digital billboard revenue idea, that's something that we should explore. Don't leave any stone unturned. And this mask is, it's like running up a hill. The CARES Act, I also, I want to thank the mayor, because I know that he had a lot to do, Mayor Polito, with securing this money, so I just want to make sure that it's secured. It's ours. I know for the last three months, we've been talking about, oh, we might, we might, we're waiting for the governor to sign his, and I know the governor signed his budget, I believe. So just want to thank the mayor. I secretly listened in to one of the calls months ago, not sure if I was allowed to, but somebody let me, and it was just nice to see, you know, the mayor really fight for our city and with the other mayors in the state. So thank you for that. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for those recognitions, council member. We work very hard, and many times, it's very difficult to keep everybody in the loop, because things move quickly, and you get a call, and you have to jump, and you have to advocate, and I have, and things have worked out for the better as it relates to that, that's for sure. Something I want to ask is that we bring some of these things back, as staff is throwing a lot at us, and I just don't want them to kind of sort of say, well, we've got directions, so off we go. Because just as one example, these $28 million, I've been giving it a lot of thought over the last several months, and this is what I consider a preliminary effort by staff to say, here's what you could do. I'd like to probably form a small ad hoc and keep, and spend a lot more time, because my concern is that we need to make sure at the end of the day that we really fight the pandemic, and not that we meet all the boxes, check everything off, the 28 million's gone, and we're sitting here towards the end of the year with a bigger problem than we have now. To me, it's clear that the county's not going to come in and save us. We have to save ourselves, and this money needs to be used, you know, very, very, very wisely, so that at the end of the day, we do get our city back and have this under control. So, you know, and this comment that I'm making applies to, you know, to things in general, meaning I think, you know, we're, you know, talking about a lot of different things, staff can come back, they can give us this, they can give us that, I just make sure we, you know, we do it in an orderly manner. So with that, I know Councilmember Solario, I believe you requested the speech, sir. Let me turn things over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, real quickly on the areas where staff wanted some feedback, CDBG funding, I think that makes all the sense in the world, and I know, Christine, we had talked about, you know, rolling extra money in for rental assistance, so that's fantastic. The mental health money for the nonprofits makes a lot of sense. The police budget realignment, thumbs up, makes sense. I know we've discussed that before, moving animal service to the Planning and Building Agency and the Crossing Guard to Public Works, that takes out $4 million to other departments without compromising public safety, and so that is something I could support. The POA labor concessions, obviously, we'll accept that. For other considerations, on the youth cannabis stuff, I do want to thank, you know, our Budget Director, Christine, for doing the meeting with me where we went literally, you know, dollar for dollar, what's there, what's not, and it's largely as what we had thought, right, which this last fiscal year, because of COVID, really, none of the $4 million got spent, maybe 500,000 or less from this past year, and then we have this year's allotment, so it's close to, close to $7 million. And the idea is just to get it out the door. We started this program, Councilmember Vegas and I, almost four years ago, right? And we literally have to, have, we have yet to put out $1 of actual service to the youth from this youth fund. So that's why I'm very anxious, just to get it out the door. We already have, you know, essentially, half in the budget, and then the other half that we'll figure out how to, how to get spent as well, but that's a good amount to be spent. The youth commission, again, the direction from the very beginning was to get input from the youth, not that they got to approve it, and there's many ways of doing that. I'm fine with staff doing that and doing an RFP if needed, but again, not a requirement, you know, there are ways to do it responsibly. The memo of how the money was quote unquote, or could be earmarked, if you read that document again, you'll see that it's a three-year plan, and for the first year, with the exception of like the bookmobile and the youth soccer field, most of it was for the future, and even the youth soccer field, that's, we're not able to build that in six months. Same thing with the vehicle. The vehicle, the bookmobile, tech mobile, is going to arrive next May, right, which in government time, really, that means next summer, it'll be out and about. And meanwhile, the community, they're hungry for tech access, they're hungry for good programming, they're hungry for a lot of things, including maybe like for the legal defense fund. Our youth are directly impacted by deportations and related issues, so I would be completely fine taking an extra 100,000 or so from this youth fund or through this RFP process that we might be done. And then one final thing, when we reviewed those ideas from Parks and Rec, a lot of those items got reviewed by the commission, and they got voted down. One example, and I could go one by one, but one example on the soccer field that's proposed, and I love soccer, the fourth soccer field I sat at, the Dan Young Soccer Complex, is because I and Mr. Mayor and others put that in when I was there the first time. But this proposal to rehab one of the dirt fields into an all-weather turf field with lights, that field is in fact, by council policy, is an adult soccer field. You know, the history of the Dan Young Soccer Complex was that years ago, when there were all these adult soccer players and Lily King and all these other smaller parks, the city council decided to kick them off all our regular parks and to instead do a Dan Young Soccer Complex for adults. We, years later, added the youth soccer field, just because the youth wanted something cool as well, and the adults were willing to give up some of that space. So even here, I'm for using some of this, because they do share with the youth, but I think there too, you know, it would be nice to, as a courtesy, check in with the adult soccer groups, because they place, they pay extra surcharges and other things. And again, the council policy really is that that field is for adults, but the adults agreed to share, so I think it is reasonable to program that, but we don't need to spend $3 million this year for that, because we can't build it that quickly. The arts grant program, 100,000, makes a lot of sense. There too, I think, out of the youth commission fund or the youth fund, if there's more money that the staff would like to roll in or through this RFP process, I think that would be fantastic. On the CARES thing, I think it's a very good start. You know, 28 million is a lot of money, but let's spend it wisely. I do think that as a specific category or by isolating within the categories, we should take a special focus on seniors, right? Food, healthcare, nursing facilities, testing, contact tracing, they're left alone, many of them, they need check-ins. I think there's a lot we could do there by category or just weaving it in throughout the program. Maybe, Mr. Mayor, we even create an ad hoc for that, just to help staff, just so we can smartly use it, because if not, we'll be with the county where it's sitting there forever.
I agree. I alluded to that during my comment earlier.
Okay, okay.
It's what I was trying to say.
Excellent, excellent.
Create an ad hoc for that and revenue enhancement, because there's, again, a lot of ground that we're covering here.
Yeah.
And it's got to be given really good thought, and it's got to be brought back to council for specific recommendations.
Speaking of the revenue-
I didn't mean that.
Thank you, it's okay.
But I agree.
Speaking of the revenue portions, I think those are all sounding good ideas. We had explored the naming rights thing in the past, it's a little easier said than done. The dollars are hard to get, but we should re-explore that. Regarding billboards, I'm generally supportive of the concept, not necessarily the number or the place, but I also think we should look at, if we are going to do something on the freeways, where we trade out some of the uglier ones in, you know, in neighborhoods and swap those out with, you know, billboards on the freeway, so that it cleans up our neighborhoods. Big picture wise, for the community and my colleagues and the staff, I think part of the reason why we saw an increase, or staff put an increase for the police, is Measure X that was approved by voters just in 2018, not long ago, they gave the city $60 million to do a variety of things that were honestly tilted toward public safety. It was about reducing 911 response time, addressing homelessness, retaining and hiring officers, and yet a few other things, but those were the main drivers. And so, you know, we got also to do right by the voters, and if they decided to tax themselves for public safety spending, you know, we're just trying to do so responsibly, but the economy is a little bit tougher, so I think, you know, that's why you're not seeing a humongous increase. Also, with the realignments and other changes, we're decreasing the amount for the police department by about $6 million. Also, I know we've kind of been accustomed to just talking about the general fund, but really, we ought to look at the entirety of the city's budget, which is closer to about $670 million. PD, after these realignments, is about $130, $140 million. So really, what that means is for police department spending, it's actually just about 20%. So if we're going to talk apples to apples and talk about our overall spending, how much is for public safety, really, it's 20%. For youth, I'm very happy that we have at least $3 million and change, and hopefully more that we'll allocate, so we will get to the about $7 million that we talked about the last time. Thank my colleagues for the support on that and the staff. In terms of safety, in addition to the realignments, I think our police chief can do some internal work to also civilianize. We talked about maybe taking some officers and turning them into PSOs that could maybe do motor services, that maybe could do more PAL outreach. There's a number of things that they could do there, and again, we don't need a council action to do things like that, our chief of police can do that, and our city manager, and I'll follow up separately on that. Also, we talked about previously, we had promised the community a community survey on how we do on 911 responses and customer service. We owe that to the community, and we ought to do it. Also, an independent use of force study, that's something that ought to be done, that with the resources in the police budget, that's something that could be contracted for. And then my son, Michael, did some great research, and he found out, kind of similar to the way we do our Quality of Life team, some cities are doing crisis intervention teams to address calls for service that might be a mental health issue, a domestic violence issue, a drug issue, where you don't need a full officer, three or four officers, you might need a team that includes an officer with or without a gun, but maybe some mental support and other staff, that's the kind of stuff that we could do. CIP, I think on the whole, that is very good, but we do have some concrete street areas, particularly Long Rate, North Flower Street and 19th Street, where I think the community still wants more, and we want to make it look organized, professional, and planned. Instead, we're getting complaints that those projects look abandoned, because some parts were done, some parts weren't, so I do want to continue to work with staff on that. On seniors, I know I did request, but maybe out of the COVID and CARES, we do need to dedicate some resources to our seniors, do some outreach, senior service- dedicate some resources to our seniors, do some outreach, senior services master plan the way that I know our parks has something comparable in mind for parks and youth that I really support. And so with all these changes that we are pondering, I'm even more enthusiastic about supporting this proposal because it provides additional resources for young people, for our community, a little bit more balance in moving some items out of PD that don't necessarily need to be there, and a lot of other good investments. So I do thank the staff and my colleagues for bringing us this far, and I appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, council members? Somebody, Mayor, who's not spoken yet?
Mayor Lido, it's Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes, Councilwoman Mendoza, please, go ahead.
Yes, well, I would like to thank staff and everybody who worked really hard on putting together the realignment of the suggestions that the council made at our last meeting. And we've, I think we've progressed quite a lot, and I think that it's a much more, let's see, bite-sized budget that we can all see that there is the different departments that are benefiting, especially bringing the CDBG monies for the rental assistance. And it's a good idea to use some of that money for the youth, for mental services, because as we all know, that the youth do benefit in their mental well-being through the arts. I would like to thank the police for collaborating and agreeing to the deferment. That saves the city $2.3 million, and so that money can be used for other very important services. And it shows that the police department, POA, is working in collaboration with what our public is asking for. So it makes no sense to defund the police because as we know that what was tried in Camden, New Jersey, the only thing that occurred was that the department was defunded and then the same police officers were rehired, 80% of them. So it was just a waste of money. And we cannot do away with our police department. Who's going to be responding to one of the emergencies that our public needs? So it makes sense to work with them and to continue providing excellent public safety. And then there may be some reforms due and maybe better training, and we can look at all that. So we are listening. I am glad that we have, City Manager found some money for the artist grant program. It is a very important part of the city of Santa Ana. We're known for the culture and the arts, and that's something that we need to continue funding. So that's very good. Thank you for listening to our requests. The revenue enhancement considerations, it's a great idea. I think it's very productive to take advantage of using these resources that we have and have some money come in. I would also like to suggest that maybe in addition to the water tower, the zoo, and the stadium, that perhaps we could include some parks. I mean, we have some great parks, and Centennial Park has been known as Centennial Park, but if somebody wants to pay several million dollars to have their name on that, why not? And the digital billboard revenue is a great idea also because it is something that's not only going to benefit our residents and bringing in more revenue to providing more services to them, but it's a way to keep them informed, to keep the information out there in areas where they can quickly get the information in case of emergencies, that we can provide them with some really quick, beautiful areas where they can quickly just look up on their way home and get the information. On the CARES Act, I want to ask whether on the high-risk resident testing and the medical services via community clinics, does that include some money to be allocated to Latino health access?
I'd say I want to mention that side of the system.
Okay, very good, because they have been out there very actively testing on their own. And yesterday, a few days ago, they were out there in the 92701 area code, so this is here and it's very important for our public health. The other CARES spending plan, do we allocate some money in here to continue to the enforcement of masks in public areas? Is that the very last one where it says other direct city expenses for the compliance ambassadors?
Oh, sorry, my mic wasn't on. So compliance ambassadors to educate the businesses on what the California state governor is requiring and ensure that everyone's wearing their mask, and then also distributing masks to our residents or to individuals that they come across that do not have masks.
Excellent, and thank you for that response. One more comment is on the cannabis monies for the youth, and my colleague, Councilmember Solario, suggested an additional $100,000 for the legal defense fund for the immigration. I would suggest that we may look at instead, allocate some money to DACA, DACA Legal Defense, that's youth, and it greatly impacts youth, or in addition, or allocate some additional monies for DACA. So perhaps we can bring that in there in addition to what is suggested now. So we need to also provide for such a segment of our population and not exclude them. We want to be inclusive of all of our immigrants regardless of their immigration status, and DACA students are very, they have contributed so much to our city, our nation, and our state, so we need to include them in some kind of legal defense fund as well. And in that area there, I also want to just remind the public that in addition to these monies, they do have other resources. We have so many pro bono community resources such as the legal aid, and we have attorneys who will provide the services at very low or no cost. So we should take into consideration that they have these kind of services available to them through other sources. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all my comments.
Thank you. Who else would like to comment?
Yes, this is Councilmember Sarmiento. Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yes, please, Councilmember.
Thank you. Let me first begin by thanking staff because I know there was a lot of work done on this budget from the first time that we saw it to what it is now. So you listened to a lot of the comments that were made, not only by us, but also from the public, so I certainly appreciate the work. And I know the Director of Finance has sat with me for long periods of time, as did the City Manager and others, just to go ahead and go through this. One question I did have, just on process. Tonight, we're considering second reading of this budget, which includes non-substantive changes to the original version at first reading. So the CARES Act stimulus money, that isn't being considered for approval, it's just for our context, right, and what we're doing, because that would be a substantive change.
Correct, sir. So we would return to appropriate it and have you approve the necessary contracts.
Great, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure, I presume that. But what I did want to do is just begin by giving some feedback, because I think, you know, staff does need to have ARC comments so they can proceed further. So I did want to say that some of the, I agree with some of the comments that were made on the mental health and dedicating that $60,000 for that, as well as the $800,000 of CDBG for rental assistance. So I concur with staff's recommendation on that. I'd like to come back to the police budget realignment after we go through some of the other items. On the cannabis tax set aside for youth, you know, one of the things that struck me when I was going back and we're talking about how do we invest in youth, how do we increase that, how do we increase those services? I remember that when we began this whole exercise with cannabis, we had 120 illegal operators in the city, approximately, give or take a few. And we dedicated a third of that revenue to enforcement because the number was just so high. And now, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're down to less than 15 or 10 unpermitted operators out there. So our enforcement has certainly been effective and successful. So my question is, do we continue to fund it at that level, given that we've reduced it by maybe, I don't know what the percentage would be, maybe 90%? So, you know, I think that there could be a way that we look at that fund, maybe reduce it, because it's not as compelling as it was when we first began. We really did need an effective fund for that. Is that something that we can consider at some point in the future?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and if I just may add to that, from the enforcement perspective, the way that you drafted the ordinance did not limit the enforcement solely to cannabis operations. It was drafted in a way to allow enforcement of all types of quality of life initiatives. And so to some extent, we began, at least from the city attorney's perspective in our office, to focus in on how we can use some of that revenue to focus in on high-profile enforcement items, whether that's the illegal gambling facilities, whether that's receiverships. We are currently working on a program to address the vacant buildings and buildings which have been damaged by fire, for example. So that's just something to keep in mind as to, that is not just specific to cannabis enforcement. But of course, it's always up to the council as to how they want to allocate that.
But remember, that's how we began this, that the enforcement was going to be dedicated to suppression and to closing of illegal, unpermitted cannabis operators.
And that has been effective.
If we've departed from that, then, you know, I think that, you know, that's something important for us to understand, because we cut the cannabis revenue three ways. General fund, a third, youth, a third, enforcement, a third. So, you know, the fact that a third of the enforcement now is going to non-cannabis enforcement or non-cannabis activity, quality of life issues that, you know, those have nothing to do with cannabis.
Right, I think that's the proposal moving forward because of the ordinance, not that that's currently what's happening.
So we may want to reconsider that because that was the original premise. Mine would be to just take a look at that, because we have been so effective with our enforcement on that, which is a good thing. On the arts grant program, I think we could even, I think as Councilmember Penyalosa mentioned, this could even be shifted to a revenue generator as well, because the way I see it is that the arts have always been a draw to the city. The fact that we have galleries, the fact that we have a creative space in downtown draws people to our, you know, to our area, draws people to restaurants and for folks to come and spend money at. So I think that it not only belongs in our column for expenses, but also, or expenditures, but also on our revenue side as well. So I did want to come back to the realignment on the police department. So I do want to recognize the hard work that's been done by the staff as well on that, and I do want to recognize the fact that there has been adjustments, positive adjustments when it comes to the deferment of the salary increases for a six-month period to January of 2021. So that is a good thing. That $2.3 million is helpful, especially during this time where we have so many variables, we don't know what sales tax is going to look like, especially now with this recent shutdown that we've had, or, you know, basically, the governor's recent orders sort of closing us down a little bit more. And also the shift in what I see as non-police core functions, and that is, you know, that's where animal services being moved to planning and building is a good thing, and that's a $3.2 million shift. Where I guess, and also the crossing guard monies or responsibilities actually being shifted to public works. And so where I am a little bit disappointed is, I know that we were talking about field operations last time, and I saw that on the allocation for field operations over the last three years. In fiscal year 17, 18, it was $52 million. In fiscal year 18, 19, it was $53. And fiscal year 19, 20, it was $53 million as well. And then this fiscal year 2021, we're going to about $57 million. So one of my, I guess, concerns is that, as I said, to the extent that we can narrow police functions to core police functions, I think it doesn't only keep our public safe, but it keeps our police officers safe as well. And I know that the quality of life team has been something that we've had to address because we have such an increasing number of homeless and unsheltered in our community. We have a lot of mentally ill in our community, and I just don't philosophically feel that that is a core police function, at least to be out there dedicating valuable resources to. And I think our finance director told me that it's a difficult carve-out, because when you talk about field operations, it involves a lot of different things. But I think as it relates to the COLT team, it's about $2.4 million that the police spend on those efforts for the quality of life. To me, that could be something that could be done by, you know, to use the chief's term, a civilianized professional, which is maybe, you know, a mental health worker, a social worker, somebody that is trained professionally to address those problems. Unfortunately, we see too many times that, you know, a simple welfare check or a contact with somebody who's not mentally well turns into something else, because a person who's autistic, who's approached by somebody in uniform, doesn't know how to respond, and, you know, may respond differently, and bad things occur. So to the extent that we can keep those contacts minimized, that is something that I think, you know, I certainly see as an improvement. The other thing is, there are things, I think, that the police department can do, and we can try to direct them. Let me just say, we've already done some very good things, so let me give credit where credit is due. The fact that we have introduced de-escalating training and de-escalation training, and to an extent that it is a very important part of the training for our officers, is very impressive, because many communities don't even know what de-escalation means. And I think the fact that we have simulations, we have very sophisticated equipment, that is a huge step in the right direction. The second thing is community-oriented policing. I know that it's been embraced by our department, and we know that it's been very effective to make sure that we build what I see as a lack of trust. And that's what I kept hearing from our constituents that spoke to us, not tonight, not, you know, meeting before, but going back years, which is there is this disconnect between our community and the department. And that shouldn't occur, because it endangers not only the public, but endangers the very lives of the officers. So if we can solve that, we're creating a safer city, a safer environment for everybody who works here and everybody who lives here. And I guess that's my goal, to do that. So, you know, one other thing that has helped that is hiring a lot of bilingual officer staff. People who can speak to somebody in, whether it's Vietnamese or in Spanish, when there's a moment that's really heated and you're trying to understand somebody who is speaking in a foreign language, look, it's hard to be able to make sense because things are already heightened. So that is a very good thing that we have. We have a lot of bilingual officers. So those are good things. I would think that our chief would say, and I'm not going to speak for him, but there's always room for improvement. This isn't a perfect department, nor are we a perfect city, nor are we a perfect organization when it comes to every department. So I always want to continue looking at better solutions and better ways to operate. So I would just say, there are some non-fiscal things that we could do that could help us be a better organization and a better department in how we exercise public safety. And some of those things are just basically holding, as we hold all our residents to an accountability standard, a legal standard, when somebody violates the law, as a resident, as a taxpayer, as a, you know, as a member of the public, all of our employees should be held to that same standard, and our officers are our employees. And I think the disconnect sometimes begins because the public thinks that we're held to a certain standard and officers are held to a different one, and that can't exist. It puts the officers in jeopardy. And that's the thing that really concerns me, is that there's, that disconnect continues. The fact that sometimes we militarize our officers to the extent that they look like they're coming into battle or going into battle is a provocative impression that folks have, and that's something that I think, to the extent we can become more of a resource rather than an antagonist, I think those help. But consistent training when it comes to not racial profiling, to make sure that we do sensitivity training, diversity training, all those things are investments in our safety. That's a public health cost. To the extent that our officers and our public understand that we're constantly sensitizing folks to understand that things shouldn't be so heated when we confront one another, those save lives. And that's worth all the money in the world, as we're And that's worth all the money in the world, as we're seeing with this pandemic, we're expending an incredible cost just to save lives. So to the extent, chief, you can look at those non-fiscal ways of improving just the environment and the way our officers are trained, you've already done, as I said, as I've enumerated at the beginning, you've already done a lot. But I think that we always can improve, we always can continue trying to be the example that other people set themselves to, rather than us following. So those were, those were my comments. I did want to go just briefly to the CARES Act money. And I would say, you know, I kind of disagree with the, you know, I disagree with, with what was said about an ad hoc, because we don't have time to convene an ad hoc, we don't have time to meet. These are things that are happening now, and I know the mayor knows that, as of last Friday and last week, the numbers were out by zip code. Santa Ana has the highest zip code of cases in the entire county. We're considered the hotspot and West Anaheim, but we're even outpacing them. And we just don't have time to discuss this. What we did during the recession, Mr. Mayor, and you remember this, because I think you and I were the only ones here in 2008, we were meeting weekly, because we knew we were facing an imminent bankrupt, a threat of bankruptcy. I would ask my colleagues to consider not forming an ad hoc, because this should be decided by all of us. We should be meeting weekly, we should be meeting in between these general meetings, and maybe going into closed session and saying, how do we solve this problem? We have folks in our community that are living in such crowded spaces that they're getting infected exponentially. And so when you see these numbers, when you see what's presented to us by the professionals, look, it is, it is a very, very dangerous case. So I would ask that, you know, we don't have the luxury of time, and three people shouldn't be recommending to the rest of us. All seven of us, seven of us need to make this decision with staff, to say, how do we move and how do we move immediately? This isn't something that we can wait for a long time. This money, it's precious, but it's only precious if we spend it now. If it's spent three months from now, we see what the federal government is doing to us by sitting on their hands and sitting on money and not doing anything. So I would say that we do that. And, and look, I, again, I feel passionate about this because of what I saw yesterday. I saw 400 people go to a mobile testing unit here in town, and they got a lot of, a lot of help. Why? Because we were in their community. Why? Because it was a trusted place, it was at a school, and because we were all partnering up for this. So I, you know, just hope that we take this extremely seriously, because if you look at all the data, it's people of color who are being impacted. And Latinos are disproportionately impacted. And 80% of our residents are Latino, and low-income, and have already compromised immune systems. So if we can't find it within us to say, yeah, let's meet in between these general meetings that we have, then, look, I don't know where our priorities are. So, you know, I thank staff for presenting this. I think this is an extremely good start, the fact that you're talking about rental assistance to the, to the degree of 3 million, you're talking about utility bills that people have been backed up on and, and not being able to pay, the fact that you're looking at isolating folks and maybe placing them in a hotel or someplace outside of their very crowded households, and the fact that you're going to be sending, hopefully, our part-timers to be ambassadors to educate our businesses and our public on how we should be behaving, and the fact that we should be wearing masks, that is an excellent start. And I want to really thank you for that thoughtful approach that you've taken. And, look, when it comes back to us, I, I think that there's some adjustments, but you certainly have a good premise here, and, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for that. Let me, let me just make one comment, and then I'll recognize you, Councilman Pena Loza.
Thank you.
I'm not talking about an ad hoc that, you know, that meets over a period of time. I'm talking about a week max, maybe less than that. I'm very aware that we don't have time. I'm also very aware that this is probably the last money we're going to get. And if we don't maximize it, we're going to be in real trouble once that money is spent. So I think in a few days, we can, we can make recommendations, the city manager can chat, you know, she can, you know, discuss with other members, if we need to have a special council meeting, we'll do that. We just need to move quickly, but we've got to really make sure that at the end of the day, there's going to be less, less cases in town. I mean, I've been seeing this tumbleweed catch on fire for months now. And I can tell you right now, before the end of the month, we're probably going to be at 5,000 cases. And there's no plan, even with the efforts that, that America and others are engaged in right now, there is no active plan that's going to be able to keep up with it. So it's really up to us in maximizing this money very, very quickly. So, so let me, let's continue, Councilman Pena Loza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to also reiterate what Councilmember Serramito said about the, the ad hoc, and just, you know, time is of the essence here when it comes to these funds. But, I mean, yeah, that's my, I don't believe we should do an ad hoc, but, you know, that's my opinion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Do we have a motion on the budget, or?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Does anybody else need to speak more?
I'd like to speak.
But Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I have the last couple of times that the budgets come before the council, I've read out the city's mission statement, because I think it's important to kind of calibrate what we're supposed to be doing with this item. To deliver efficient public services in partnership with our community, which ensures public safety, a prosperous economic environment, opportunities for our youth, and a high quality of life for our residents. So I, I want to thank staff for all that they've done to really take this responsibility seriously, to provide these public municipal services and figure out how we can do it through the budget. I appreciate that in our budget, we have increases to parks and rec at about 5%, public works at 3%. And if my colleagues do support the proposed reallocations of animal services and the crossing guards, we're looking at PD only having a 2% increase. I mean, going from what we had initially proposed, that's remarkable. So I want to thank staff for their work on that. I would also like to express my support for funding towards the arts programs, if those carryover funds can be identified. In regards to the police budget, one particular part that I, I expressed at the last meeting that kind of concerns me is the supplemental request for 500,000 for the quality-of-life team, or the, the cult team. And that team, as many of you know, is to address the homeless and how they impact our quality of life here, our residents. And so responding to the homeless-related issues is not a supplemental item. And while I do appreciate that our, our police have allocated more staff to the cult team, but just calling it a team in that regard almost sounds like it's an external, you know, extra function. And I know it's a collaborative effort amongst city departments, but I feel like to have a supplemental request at such a level where you have, in the police budget, over time, proposed at smaller accounts, it just sends the wrong message, in my, my opinion. And so with that, you know, it just, I appreciate what our police are doing out there, but I feel like we're, we really need to focus. You know, we're talking about what the community wants and, and how our police work out there. Folks that call me are concerned about the homeless and, and what they're doing out there. And so I think that, while I know our police are trying their best to take care of the situation, I would just push even further that we really dedicate more resources to that. And I think that can come from within the current proposal for our field staff. With that having been said, you know, I talk about the 500,000 in supplemental requests from PD's allocation from COLT. I would actually like to see that $500,000 go towards our city sidewalks. I know it's not a sexy topic, but it is a basic municipal city service that we're supposed to provide. And right now, you know, our public works director put together a program, it's a seven-year program that'll get our crumbling sidewalks up to a good shape, and that we can reasonably maintain with less money over time. But that takes a dedication from our part to fulfill that basic city function. And so, you know, right now, when, when I reached out to Nabeel and I'd asked him about a couple of sites that needed some work, and we had some crumbled sidewalks and curbs, he said, well, I'd love to, but, you know, by the way, sir, I've asked for some money to, to provide this service for all of you, but I'm at 500,000. And I thought, well, 500,000, what do you need? 1.6 million. So out of a budget that is over 300-plus million for the general fund, and over half-a-billion when it comes to the overall package, I, I don't think it's a terrible thing to, you know, as we talk about all these wonderful things we want to do, I feel like, you know, just, let's get back down to the basics, where our community would like to be able to walk to the store, or walk to a park without tripping and falling, or, you know, having just terrible infrastructure under them. So again, I know it's not the most, you know, headline-grabbing item, but I would like to ask my colleagues that, as we consider the second reading that we give Nabeel, just 500,000 more dollars, you know. And the sad thing is, if we don't, he's at 31% of what he needs to provide sidewalks, just sidewalks. So this would only get him up to 63%, but I, I hope Nabeel would appreciate being able to get up to 63% versus 31%. So that would be something I would like to pose to my colleagues to consider as we look at the second reading. But also, too, I, I just want to thank everybody for, you know, all the time, and I thank everybody for calling in, especially those that weren't too profane. But I, I think it's, I'm glad that all of us agreed that we wanted to hear the community out. I'm glad we gave them as much time as we did, and I'm glad that, you know, it may be late, but, you know, that's what we signed up to do. So that's all my comments at this point. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say my comment on the budget?
Yes, please, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I'll be quick. So I'm in agreement with the comments regarding DACA on the defense fund. I was also going to suggest a, you know, mid-year budget review, maybe we can find something there. And I think when we started the, the, the defense fund a while back, it was less than 100,000, then it was 100,000, and then there was a mid-year review somewhere, and then we doubled it. And so it was never set at that amount. It was just money that was allocated to it. But, you know, I don't mind adding more to it. The DACA comment was a great comment by Councilmember Mendoza, and I appreciate that. I'm in support. The, I'm in support of the art programs, the CDBG funds, the youth commission comments, and also the artist grant comments. One thing that I want to mention also that's in this budget, El Salvador Park, the basketball courts are going to be replaced. So it broke my heart when I was there a while back, and I saw that there was cracks in the basketball courts, and people had to dribble the ball around the cracks, because it would just make the ball go elsewhere, and you couldn't even play. And it took a while, because I believe that's concrete. So that's in this year's budget. There's also going to be some sports courts, and there's new LED lights that are going to be put in there also. And recently, I had some speed bumps put on Beulah, I'm looking at Gunther next. It just takes a while, and I got to find funds. There's a lot going on. And like Councilmember Becerra was saying, you know, to repair the sidewalks and the streets and all that, you know, I would love to do a lot, and I know it costs about 300, 350 million dollars to do the, the drainage here in the city, and that's why the certain sections of the, of the city flood. And it's very, very tough, we could use more money on that. Also, I think there was a, some folks that didn't seem to understand, I guess, the police budget. I'm glad that the animal control portion is going to be moved out, and I think the responsibility will be going to another department, and I hope they take care of the whole thing. And with all the responsibilities that come with it, the crossing guards thing, that's a, that's a great, you know, service that we offer, helps our schools. But in this police budget, you know, the, the increase, a lot of it was a workers' comp increase, there was a liability charge increase, there was the jail meal increase, there was a ton of overtime that was accumulated recently, and also the quality-of-life team also, and a lot of things just to keep the police department sustained and the level of service. You know, we heard a lot of voices today, and I appreciate everyone that came out and spoke, and, and I thank you. But there's also a voice that people seem to forget, and that is the voice of the people that keep calling the police department every day for service, for help. Those 400 phone calls on the average that come in every 24 hours, those 13,000 phone calls that come in every month, that accumulate to about 150,000 calls for service a year on our police department, which is operating with half of the officers. One of the main complaints that I get about the officers, what took so long to get there? Well, we don't have the personnel. And Santa Ana's a very active city. I'm sure you all know that. Let's not forget about the voice of those people who called that are asking for help, that are asking for service. Their voice matters also, and we need to maintain the level of service best we can for those residents. They don't call to say we're having a great day, they call because they need help, whether, whatever the case may be, a dispute with a neighbor, or a lost child, or a drowning, or a baby not breathing, or what have you, because those calls go first to police dispatch before they get down to the, the fire department. And, you know, it takes a lot for a person to pick up the phone and call the police in many occasions. For that woman who's having problems with her abuse at home, or something happened to her, her children, God forbid, or the daughter didn't come home, and they're very desperate, they would need people to show up right away. And these men and women in uniform come to work every day and to provide that service, and they put their life on the line for everyone, and I appreciate that. And we cannot forget about that voice. And those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to add that on the arts programs, I've been a supporter, you know, from the arts, you know, since before we started the Artage Village, and of course, Bowers and everything else. And right now, I think it's important that we do support the local artists. I know in certain cases, they don't have the money to front a project and then seek reimbursement. So I just hope we can add flexibility to the rules, such that if we award a grant, we actually are able to provide the money without forcing them to come up, you know, with the money themselves and then seek reimbursement. You know, for some, that's just, you know, more than they can handle, and frankly, I think more than they, they should handle. I think they're doing a, a service to the community when they embark on, on these projects that they're a part of, and I'm just glad they're, they're here in our city, making beautiful art. So with that, I know we've all had, you know, thoughts and comments. I'd like to entertain a motion, and hopefully, we can get a vote and keep moving forward.
Mr. Mayor? Is there a motion? Mr. Mayor, do you have a, a motion in mind, but I have a question first to our city attorney. I know we took a-
Okay, go ahead.
-great care at our last city council meeting to talk about, we couldn't make any substantive changes today. The changes that we are seeing today that are in front of us are based off of staff's assessment of the prior meeting comments, and that was put into our budget. I think other things like, you know, sidewalk and streets and COVID stuff, that'll come next. We did give, I think, you know, good direction for that, but that'll come separately. So in some ways, we're a little bit limited on what other changes we can make tonight. I also do like Mayor Protem Viega's suggestion of a mid-year budget review, I think because the economy and COVID and all these other things. I know we typically do a mid-year budget review around October or so, maybe we try to advance it, you know, a month or whatever it may be, and we can revisit things there as well to recalibrate. So with that, you know, the, the recommended action that staff has, I think, is very simple and appropriate, and so I'll move that we place this ordinance on second reading and adopt the budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question, just-
Go ahead, Councilman Pena Loza.
Thank you, sir. So I just want to be clear, the, the second ordinance that there's a motion for, is that including everything that was said? Because I, I don't think there were any differences in opinions up here in regards to the, the changes that were presented to us in this follow-up.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would like to, if we can go back to your motion, Councilmember Salaro, and add clarification. So my understanding from what I heard is, you are going to adopt the budget at the second reading with the following changes. Staff will carry over the CDBG money and will utilize it for rental assistance of 800,000, unless they cannot locate money for the artist grants, and then some of that money would be used for artist grants. Staff will allocate 60,000 for mental health assistance, as recommended on the- slide. And the other items I heard is of the youth cannabis money, there was a desire to take 100,000 of that to go for legal defense specifically for DACA. And the other one was the non-fiscal direction that we received is emphasis on seniors in the CARES program, looking at enforcement funding from cannabis to see if there's any excess, and also adding to the revenue opportunities, extending it out to the parks, and further dive into the CIP plan, and then opportunities within the police department to create better practices. So that's what I took away with my notes.
Does that not include what I asked as far as the 500,000 dollars to move over from the supplemental request over to sidewalks?
So, city attorney, I would consider 500,000 non-substantive. I don't know if you would opine the same way?
Really quick before you answer, I was in agreement with that because, you know, the sidewalks is very, something that's very basic and very, I mean, just over the last couple of weeks, I've submitted a lot of sidewalk through the app that needs to get repaired. And they're very quick to do it, which I'm happy with. But, I mean, these are temporary repairs. I just wasn't sure how, what it meant for the supplemental request. I mean, does that, that doesn't...
What it would do is it would take away the half a million dollars in COLT overtime that's currently in the police department, and it would transfer it to the Public Works Department for the sidewalk program.
And see, what I don't agree with that is that these services shouldn't be in overtime. I mean, we've hired enough officers over the last year to say, you know what, we have six or whatever it is now, or eight, to be able to, to just, that's their job. That's their basic, nine to five, or not nine to five, but whatever the hours it is they work. It shouldn't be overtime. I mean, that's the whole reason why we were hiring is to be able to provide these extra services that we haven't seen. Those are my just comments on that. I would be interested in seeing that supplemental request go towards something like sidewalks, but maintaining the eight officers for COLT at their pay. I mean, it shouldn't be an overtime duty, is what I'm asking.
The chief has grown the COLT team at the regular pay as well. This is just an additional amount in case there is an enormous amount of calls for service that they do oftentimes use overtime. But they do have regularly funded police officers assigned to the COLT team.
And I can answer that question that City Manager Ridge is asking you to address. So the last meeting, you had a conversation about potentially reducing police department expenditures and shifting them to other priorities. I think that here, that priority is the infrastructure. So I do believe it would fall within your charter rules. It would allow you to have a second reading tonight on that issue.
Which I'd be supportive of, but I want to make sure that the police department or the chief or anybody goes and says, okay, we're reducing three or four officers from the COLT team. Because again, this is something that should be done just as their services. And the few times that I've reached out for COLT, very responsive, and I'm happy with the service they do. I know it's a tough job, but I mean, that's what they get paid for. So, I mean, I'd be interested in seeing that.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question, and it was more posed to the city...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
It's more posed to the city attorney, because I guess I didn't understand, I don't understand the technical difference between money being allocated for the Universal Legal Defense Fund and DACA recipients. Because isn't one, isn't the Defense Fund incorporate cases that would involve potential DACA defendants?
So when I, when I look at the issue, I just looked at the scope of your conversation the last, at the last meeting, within the scope of that conversation, you talked about potentially diverting some or potentially reallocating money that was in the police department for other uses. And you had a conversation about some of your capital improvements. That was a topic that was discussed. I don't recall at the last meeting there being a specific discussion about the DACA issue. I know you had a discussion about rent subsidies and also a discussion about providing legal defense. So I would, maybe I would ask, I looked to the city manager and ask her what her staff looked at.
No, because I think, I think the councilwoman was talking about increasing to make sure that DACA students or DACA youth are, you know, represented as a role or as maybe a potential recipient of these services. But isn't that being done already, I guess is my question, is wouldn't those DACA funds, when we employ the service provider, which is immigrant defense, I think they're called, they provide services, legal representation to ensure due process is being followed for defendants that are being repatriated or deported and separated from their families? Wouldn't a DACA student already be eligible for that defense?
Councilmember, I believe you're correct. There isn't a prohibition on whether it's DACA or other status of illegal alien. I think that Councilmember Mendoza wanted to supplement the existing 100,000 with an additional 100,000 and focus that second 100,000 specifically on DACA, is my understanding.
And I think that that works so long as we understand it's subsumed. Like, I think there were comments made even previously, let's make sure that veterans or we make sure that folks who are vulnerable are addressed within that. So I just wanted to get some clarity because I don't think they were ever excluded. So it's not like we're carving out a new population that's going to be protected, but it is part of that larger population that we're trying to protect. So with that clarification, I think that was a good comment.
And I'll accept those as friendly amendments. And on the DACA thing, Councilmember Sarmiento is right. The way had we designed it and the organizations running the program, there kind of is an informal preference for Santa Ana residents, veterans, and Dreamers. You know, and Dreamers really is with DACA. So I think the idea is to add another 100,000 with, you know, preference to help, you know, Dreamers and DACA students that we have a lot in our community, and there's a lot changing in that program. So I think that makes sense.
So you'll, you'll add that to your motion, and then the other item that I didn't mention was the realignment of the two identified police...
Yes, and the realignment items as well, yes. I took all those as friendly amendments.
All right. With those clarifications, are we ready? I'd like to have the clerk call the roll.
I think we need a second, maybe. Do we have a second?
I thought you had one, no?
So, Councilmember Viegas, second.
Mayor Protem, seconds.
Just really quick, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please, man.
Madam City Manager, so I never got a yes or no, or what was going to happen on that 500,000.
It's included in the motion.
Yes, it's included.
Okay. But we would maintain the staffing level of the COLT team at the same...
You will, but the overtime hours that is typically used by your DART team will not be available for the police department to utilize.
So my concern with that, it's like, why, I know that even in the police department's budget, we created this, the new MET team that uses five-plus million dollars, you know, how is there not any money in the entire police department budget to be able to provide that 500 grand for any overtime needed for the COLT team?
There is additional programming for regular overtime, but based on the experience of the DART team, this was the amount that was determined to be needed to keep up the same level of effort with the homeless population in our city.
Madam City Manager, you, the line item doesn't say DART. It just says, it's a supplemental request for COLT overtime. No DART.
DART is part of COLT, in my opinion.
Okay. Well, no, but it didn't say that, that's why, I mean, okay.
I don't want to see any money removed from the COLT team. I mean, that's a priority here for us to deal with the homeless. And, I mean, I'll approve the budget, but with my own personal opinion, I don't approve that portion.
We're not, we're not defunding COLT. I never said we're defunding COLT. It's overtime that I'm saying should be reallocated.
Yeah, but it's very...
It'll come out of the police department. At the end of the day, it stays with the department.
We're short on officers, and I think that's why, you know, there's a lot of overtime issued regarding that service.
But, so what I understand, so I'm just, why can't we have that as its own funded group? But then, I don't understand how there's nowhere in the police department there could be an absorption of 500,000 dollars for overtime for a quality of life team, something that is urgently needed and is a high priority for residents. Is there any money available in the, whether it's the MET team that was, you know, created with that extra five, I mean, there isn't two officers that could be repositioned or reclassified to that area of the COLT team?
I'll ask the chief to come up to the mic if you'd like, but all the officers' regular salaries are budgeted. So the eight that are on the COLT, that serve on the COLT teams, their regular salaries are budgeted. This was just a supplemental request that the police department had, based on their experience in addressing homelessness, that they felt they needed a half a million in overtime to keep up with all of the requests. So as to whether he has officers that can be deployed from other areas to make up at a regular time, I would defer to him on that.
Okay. Don't touch the mic. Thank you for the question. So we have one sergeant and now eight police officers assigned full-time. So when, the comment is that we don't, we haven't allocated resources, we very much in fact have. We went from one police officer to nine, full-time quality of life. This overtime request is for the additional staffing that's required to get the six and seven-day-a-week coverage, right? And that's the DART team on overtime. That's what that is. And so if we reallocate that money, will there be an impact? Sure. If the direction of the council under the city manager is to figure that out, then that's what I have to do. I also think, you know, you know, when we make the comment on MET, for example, specifically, you know, I'm charged with, first and foremost, addressing violent crime and quality of life. So it's a balanced approach. I clearly understand the priorities of this council and the community, and that's why we've allocated those additional resources to quality of life on a full-time, permanent basis. This is an additional request for the seven-day-a-week coverage, that when you pick up the phone, you have that immediate response, it's there, it's staffed. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, it did, Chief, thank you. Just one thought on the COLT team, just as, I mean, the times that I've reached out to CDA over encampments and whatnot, handful of times, the COLT team is always in the Santiago Creek area, which I know it needs to be cleaned. I'm not saying it shouldn't, but every time, never fails. Could be in the morning, it could be in the afternoon, it could be at noon. Oh, they'll be there, they're a little late because they're in the creek. It's like, you know, and the creek's north of 17, and that's what we're all, there's a lot of hotspots along First Street, along Standard, along Edinger, along Harbor, that just get ignored all day long when we have now eight police officers on the COLT team, because they're always at the creek. And I know the creek's important, but we should try to spread out the target different areas of the city throughout the week and not just spend the entire 500,000 dollars in overtime in the creek, which I know needs to be cleaned, I'm not saying it shouldn't. But there's a lot of, and the last time I brought that up, it's, you know, we're trying to identify the hotspots in the city. Well, I could tell you where the hotspots in the city are, I just did, and just any resident in the city could tell you where the hotspots of the city are. So I just want to be mindful of when we're having the COLT team out there, it's, they're being, you know, they're being spread out equally throughout the city and addressing the numerous encampments and just loitering that we're seeing throughout the city, and not just in the creek, that many people don't often see. It's the ones we, the areas we drive, everyone sees daily and slap you in the face when you get off the freeway. Those are the areas that should be addressed more than the creek. And those are, those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just make one clarifying comment from my end, and that is just...
Go ahead, Constable Sarmiento, and then Mayor Protem.
I'm absolutely supportive of our COLT team. I just don't believe that the COLT functions need to be done with overtime dollars. I believe that we appropriate for officers to be on call, on duty, excuse me, at all hours. You know, just because they're on after 5:00 PM doesn't mean they should be on overtime, right? There are night shifts. So to somehow say that the COLT team, once it becomes dark, now it's overtime, I'm just not buying that. I'm not, I'm not subscribing to that theory. And so for me, I'm not trying to defund COLT, just so we can be absolutely clear. All I'm saying is, let's bring in the officers. In fact, I'm pretty sure the chief has heard us ad nauseam tell him, we think that we need to deal with the homeless situation. So with that being said, if our prescription for that is COLT, then fine. But all I'm saying is, when I see a supplemental request for overtime for something that should be a basic function, I don't know, like sidewalks, then maybe that's what we need to do. So I just want to be clear, I'm not trying to take away from COLT, not trying to take away, all I'm saying is, let's be smarter about how we allocate our officers, and let's not try to ramp up the overtime. That's all I'm asking.
So my comment, my, Mr. Mayor, so my comment is...
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my comment is that, you know, I understand, I'm with him, with Councilmember Becerra regarding the sidewalks, totally agree. But at the same time, Measure X dollars were, you know, the voters voted on it so we can address the homeless issue and a lot of other things. And I understand also, part of that is quality of life to fix the sidewalks, and we'll have to find some money. And it's true, I had my meeting with, with our public's director, our public works director also, and we concurred on how much money they actually need to do the sidewalks. But one of the major priorities in this city was to address the homeless issue, and so we needed that quality of life to go. And like the chief said, we're talking seven days a week, maybe if you call in the evening. And at the same time, the chief is trying to juggle the, you know, public safety issue also when it comes to violent crime. I mean, there is people who do come from out of town to our city to commit crime, and they're not the nicest folks. I mean, some of these people come from other counties and they do what they do out here. So it needs to be addressed. And I think the chief is doing a great job trying to address this. But the Measure X dollars are for the quality of life team, and it needs to be addressed, and that's my opinion.
If I may make a suggestion. So you have a motion and you have it seconded, but if that's a concern, what we can do is the chief and I can work together. And if throughout the year, we feel that we are hampered by the lack of that money, and it is interfering with addressing the homeless issue, we'll certainly come back to you.
During the mid-year, during the early, mid-year, yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
That'd be appropriate.
This just opens up the, you know, the, the idea of, we need to have another conversation of what exactly is a priority for us out here in the open. When it comes to the police department, there are a lot of good things that the chief is doing in the police department. I thank him for his leadership just over the last three years alone. We've seen an increase in, in, across the board, in transparency and just relationships with the public. I mean, it has gotten better than it was in the 90s and 80s. There's no, there's no arguing that. But one thing that I'm just thinking right now out loud as we think of overtime, how we are asking for 500 grand for the COLT team for overtime, I think of operations like the Easter Sunday cruising operations that we've done. I mean, I know that that was a huge problem in the 80s and 90s, and, and that was, you know, a lot of people had concerns over that, over the cruising. And I don't think it's, it's, you know, I've seen it, I live right off of Modern Day, I've, you know, I have to deal with it every time. But those are things that we could look at as we move forward. It's like, is that type of enforcement and overtime and huge production necessary to what it is now, to what it was? There are areas where we do all these little things that we could probably scale back a little bit and find that money to, to, you know, provide that extra supplemental request for, for the COLT team. Those are just little ideas I'm thinking about, but that's another conversation that we could probably have in the next couple of weeks. Those are my comments.
All right, Madam Clerk, if there's no objection, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Piñalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
No.
Councilmember Solario?
Solario, yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 6-1.
Okay, let's go back. Madam Clerk, help me out here. We're gonna go back.
To the consent.
Consent counter. Does anybody wish to pull any items on consent?
Yes, Mayor Pulido, this is Councilmember Mendoza.
Go ahead.
Item 13A. That is it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Piñalosa.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a stay here till 3:00 AM. I'm pulling items 19E, 25A, 55A, and 55B.
And Mr. Mayor, if this wasn't in his long list, I'd like to do just one item, 55A.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to be... Mr. Mayor, I don't want to be left out. I'm gonna join my two colleagues on the other side and go with the 55A as well.
Okay. Any other items?
And nothing for me.
Well, then why don't you make the motion on the balance since you're a gentleman without one item.
Second.
All right, roll call vote on the balance. Please, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmembers Pinalosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Solario?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Pulido?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay, what's the first item that we pulled?
13A.
That's me, Mayor Pulido.
Please, go ahead, go on.
Thank you. I just have a clarification question. It indicates that these two commissioners will be appointed to the Ward Six Representatives for a full-term expiring December 13th, 2020. It was my understanding that the term would end in 2022.
One moment while I look at that.
Do we want to go to the next item if the clerk needs a moment?
Yes, that's fine. I believe it's 19-
What's the next item?
I believe 19E, sir.
All right, who pulled that one?
I did, sir, this is Councilmember Pinalosa.
Please, go ahead.
19E is receive and file a status report regarding the comprehensive update to the general plan. The reason I pulled it is because I don't think it should be filed or received. I don't agree with what's been presented in the receiving file personally. I know that I've met, you know, two or three times with the planning staff over the general plan update. And from what it seems, and I don't know what any of my colleagues have relayed to the planning in their meetings with planning staff, but none of my suggestions or recommendations to the general plan update have been considered at all. I mean, zero. I don't see any of them. I had, you know, a couple of questions for the planning director or the city manager, whoever wants to come up and take these questions.
Certainly. We do have a short presentation. If you just want to go straight to questions and skip the presentation or see the presentation-
Oh, sure, let's go with the presentation first.
Okay.
Was the presentation going to be presented regardless? Because I pulled the item.
I have, I have the presentation.
Okay, yeah, yeah, let's see it.
Thank you, Mayor and member of the commission. Tonight, we are presenting the update on the progress of the general plan process. As you recall, this process has been in the works since 2015 and a lot of work has been done on the update in terms of reaching out to the community, working with the various technical advisory, and then also meeting with the various council members. The general plan update is a combination of working through the various issues with the community, providing the input and also addressing it into a long-term document. The question of the Golden City and Beyond is a slogan that is being used as part of this process. The slogan was actually adopted back by the city council in the early 80s as part of the revitalization of Santa Ana. And there was change in 2006 to the current slogan, which is Downtown Orange County. We're using the slogan to help convey the message that since the general plan is being changed and updated for the first time in almost 40 years, that this is going beyond the Golden City and it's looking to the future for a vision. You know, as a city and being known as Downtown Orange County, we are a city that is looking towards as a leadership city and very many recognizable aspects of our city are seen throughout the region. And as any city, any good planned out city has, you know, it has culture, it has arts, very recognizable iconic images. And as you look on the slide there, you can instantly recognize, you know, the pictures there, which cities is being referred to and really recognize it for what it is and what it conveys. And we believe that Santa Ana also has that same level of energy and that same level of focus that, you know, can be a world-class city. So there are things in our city that, you know, that we can also work upon enhanced and look at how we can continue to do that as we look towards the future. And the general plan is a document to do that. You know, we have the museum, we have, you know, iconic images as you drive down the freeway, the cube. We have the Santa Ana water tower. We have arts and culture. We have a zoo, you know, we have iconic skyline in the south area with office buildings and residential building. So, you know, a good transportation system, the streetcar. Those are our aspects of what we see as a city that can, you know, have a world-class image and a vision as we move forward. Not only do we have all those assets, but we have, we're in a region with other assets that we can potentially explore and be able to, you know, be able to benefit from, you know, throughout the region. The John Wayne Airport, it has the call sign of SNA. You know, that's the Santa Ana. So that's something that is quite a benefit in terms of just worldwide recognition. The Honda Center, you know, Angels, Disneyland, all of those things are close by. And, you know, looking at what type of activity, what kind of economic development activity that we can generate and be benefit from that, those are the things that we want to capture in this general plan. So, you know, just to kind of go back to the slide, you know, ask the question of what other city can be recognizable, we think that Santa Ana is something that can be very recognizable as we go through this process throughout general plan. We can become a world-class city and look at what we can do to continue to convey that, cultivate that, and promote that. The general plan is a long-term blueprint. It's looking out 25 years as a plan for development of all of our land use infrastructures. We're looking at first time economic development element that focuses on what we do for economic development. Historical preservation, for the very first time, we're making sure that we continue to change, but change in a way that respect and celebrate our culture and heritage. And, you know, together, we're looking at a total of 12 elements, eight of which are required by the state law and four of which are something that we felt very important locally through listening to the community, through working with the council. And all those will be updated and also be added. So these are the various elements that are required by the state as well as the, that we're adding. The only element that won't be updated currently is the housing element and that element has its own track. It's only one of the eight elements required by the state that we have to update regularly. And we have to update it to address the RENA numbers as allocated by the state through HCD and then ultimately SCAG. So that won't be updated until SCAG and HCD has finalized their allocation number at the end of this year. And it will give us about a year from October to complete and we should have it adopted by October of 2021. Right now, we're in the process of going out and doing outreach for the environmental justice and we're doing it virtually, unfortunately, as much as we like to engage the public. Because of the COVID-19, we have had to work through a virtual process, working with our neighborhood improvement program. We outreach to 30,000, 32,000 mailers to the community asking and sharing information about environmental justice issues and then also informing the community about upcoming meetings. In 2019, we did a survey of focus area workshops citywide, working, and we received over 650 responses, over 300 participants at a citywide focus area workshop. So, you know, almost 1,000 residents participated in that process. We worked with the general plan tech advisory group and met with that team, the general plan advisory group, which is a community-based stakeholders, you know, that I think a council member participated as well. So throughout that process, we were able to gather and, you know, input and also provide a direction and then work with the council to really focus in on that. And then, you know, some of the initial outreach, while I wasn't here for that, in reviewing that, I think we, as a city, the staff did a tremendous job in just going out to the community, working with the community groups, going to community events, attending weekends, night events, just so that they can hear the residents. So very extensive. And to say that the outreach is monumental is another statement. I think it was, the staff did a great job with that. So the key focus area, and this is really looking at, you know, what is our strategy here? We are a built-out city. We are, you know, a city of over 27 square miles that's built out to every square inch. So the opportunity that we have is to only really look at a strategy of where can we accommodate growth that can best accommodate growth so that we can still maintain the character of certain neighborhoods, single-family neighborhood, residential neighborhood, but also looking at how do we ensure that the major corridor throughout our city not only serves as a transportation corridor, but adds opportunity for us to continue to expand, to grow, and create economic mobility and economic diversity for our community with the goal of improving the quality of life ultimately. So the five areas are the South Main Street, which reach from First Street all the way down to Warner. We have Grand and 17th Corridor. We have the West Santa Ana Boulevard, 55 dire road in South District. And when you look at it just by themselves, you say, well, these, how were these selected? They were selected because they fill in the gap and of existing plans that we have. So when you connect them with the blues, you can see that they all kind of work together in order to have a comprehensive vision and continue to promote redevelopment, revitalization, and reuse of existing major corridors that can help us to accommodate some of these strategies. So the general plan format addresses key community topics that are important to resident businesses as well as council members that we met with. As I mentioned, there are eight mandated topics, elements, but we have a total of 12, which includes four that is locally being proposed. There is an environmental justice element and this is a key element that's actually required by state law. This is very much needed in our community because we have quite a bit of environmental issues where we have manufacturing businesses located adjacent to sensitive land uses such as residential. And there is quite a bit of conflict with that. There are a few areas throughout the city. The conflict is so great that residents are concerned about their health. So through the general plan, environmental justice element, we're able to weave in, looking at different strategy on how do we address those type of issues? How do we mitigate and make the land uses more compatible over a period of time? And that is in the environmental justice element. Another thing that we're proposing to do is to streamline the document. A general plan is a living document. It's something that we actually, as a city, use on a daily basis. But sometimes it's complicated, it's hard to navigate. And we believe that with making it more streamlined, making it easier to navigate, we can make that more transparent to our community, easier to review, easier to access. And hopefully, it's something that everybody can refer to. So the goal is to reduce the document down to its basic minimal requirements and make it simple to use. So that's really what we're looking at in terms of the format. Talk about the environmental outreach. I won't go over that too much. Up community, community workshop. We have one on July 1st and one August 1st. These are gonna be evening, but also events that will be done virtually. We, as I mentioned, provided quite a bit of extensive outreach and sent out our invitation. We hope to have high-level participation. We'll be presenting the draft community plan to the community as well and then look at it, going over some major changes on the land use policy. In terms of the next step, we'll continue our environmental outreach, complete our community workshop. The really next big milestone is to complete the IR and the draft element so that we can provide that to the council for your review and then also feedback to us on whether you think we heard you or not and, you know, if those issues are being characterized correctly. And then with that, we can go through the process of working with the commission to adopt and make the adoption process basically by the city council and the planning commission. The goal is for that to begin late summer in this year. That concludes the presentation.
Good idea. Do you have questions, council member? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Min. I had a, you know, some of the emails that I received today in regards to the general plan, receive and file, was that, you know, a lot of, a couple residents participated in these outreach efforts done over the last year or two, three years. And that none of the concerns that were spoken about at these meetings were taken into consideration given what the maps and the proposed changes that are proposed in the staff report. The comment that I, one of the comments that I got was saying, you know, the planning department doesn't listen to the community in these. And my response was, clearly don't listen to, at least me as a council member, the city council. One of the questions that I had is because I know that a lot of the proposed changes in the maps presented in the staff report, mostly in central Santa Ana, along Main Street, along Bristol, Bristol Street. So I wanted to just quickly ask, I know North Main Street isn't included in here. When we had that project in, across the street from the Discovery Cube, what is that zone, currently zone that, that land?
Office.
Office. And we were, one of the ordinance was to change it to what?
District center.
District center. And so what does district center, Mr. Tai, allow you to, allow us as a city to build by right?
The district center is a mixed-use designation that allows for a combination of commercial retail use. It's generally used to accommodate higher-density type development in a mixed-use urban environment.
Higher-density development, so like apartments? Could we build apartments on them?
Apartments, commercial center, correct.
Okay. So what, and I'm trying to understand what the thought process of the planning department is. If we've seen what happened and what the outspoken support from the neighborhoods in north of the city, north Santa Ana, that they don't want to see high-density development along single-family homes, why would we even propose to change all the central part of Santa Ana, the poorer communities, single-family homes that we know don't have the resources to activate and organize and come to the council meetings and stay here till 3:00 in the morning to speak in opposition of a project? Why would we want to do that all throughout Main Street? From First to Warner, I believe, I believe, Bristol Street, you know, all throughout Bristol Street? I want to know if the residents north of 17th and Grand, do they know that this, they want to, we want to change the general plan to include DC to allow high-density development? I mean, is that, I don't, just by being on the council last year and the multiple council meetings and planning commission meetings that we saw of how the community feels about high-density development along single-family homes, just on Main Street? I mean, I live half, less than that, a quarter of a mile from that. I know that a lot, I know a lot of people that live along Main Street. Do the Wilshire Square residents know about this proposed change? Do the Wilshire Square residents know about this proposed change? Do the Madison Park residents know about these proposed changes that are going to severely impact their quality of life? One of the things that we mentioned was part of our goal here is to improve the quality of life in Santa Ana, which I don't think that this does that. I think it really diminishes the quality of life of all those single-family homes that live along these stretches of the city, especially in the centrally located in the city. I know that, just looking at the proposed changes, I mean, that's all that we're doing is, you know, moving commercial to, you know, District Center to allow for high-density development. I know that right before the Twenty-five Twenty-five North Main apartments were proposed or came for a final vote, a developer reached out to me about, asking me how I felt about developing a commercial site off of Grand and Fairhaven, I believe, or Grand and Santa Clara, into high-density apartments. And the first thing I said, it's like, have you not watched or paid attention to what's happening with Twenty-five Twenty-five North Main Street? All those really nice, single-family homes along the Santa Ana Cemetery and Fairhaven and I don't think that they'll be very happy to find out that there's high-density development coming, you know, just right on the other side of their Cinder block wall. So I want to make sure that the public knows that these proposed changes are coming. You know, the idea is to build high-density along next-year, single-family homes, along Main Street, along Bristol, along Grand. And I, I mean, I'm not comfortable with it, I haven't, I haven't been from the beginning. If we're going to see high-density development, it should be on the outskirts of the city, on the edges throughout the, where a lot of it already exists, over by where Phil lives, high-density. But I, I'm kidding. But I mean, that's what, you know, we've seen how against this type of development the city is, so why would we want to update the general plan to include more of this throughout the entire city? I know we're built out and I know that housing is a crisis and it's much needed, but I mean, that's the thing, it's like, we should build high-density housing in areas where we can, but not just update the entire general plan to allow for that type of development from north to south along big stretches of road, especially considering Main Street is only in one area, I think it's two lanes, one way in each direction. I mean, I don't, I don't see this working, just my opinion, those are my comments, but I want to make sure that we, the outreach that's done, that's done is, you know, is good, it's better than what we've done. I know that I've pushed and pushed the idea of social media sponsoring content to really, really, you know, have residents see it. People that would normally not be subscribed to the city's Nixol Alerts or the city's Facebook page or the, I mean, there's a lot of residents that aren't subscribed to any of that, but would still want to know and see what changes are coming. So if we could, I mean, increase the outreach on this and really make the public aware of what's being proposed, I mean, that's all I can ask for at this point, but just wanted to say that I'm not comfortable with any of this general update proposed. So I know it's a receiving file, so I personally wouldn't want to receive and file it, I mean, just want to send it back and bring us, but I don't know what the pleasure of my colleagues are or this council. So those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Becerra, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I gotta say, you know, I sat on the general plan advisory committee when I was a planning commissioner and I was very impressed, you know, Min's predecessor just, you know, had a great cross-section of the community, you had folks from the school district, business, residents, different institutions all throughout the city that all participated. And when Min was kind of thumping his chest there, talking about the outreach, he has every right to do so. I mean, they, this is one of those things where I think our city really shined when it came to outreach because it was thorough. Unfortunately, it didn't continue on a consistent course and so here we are a couple of years later, but a lot of what was said back then, I dusted off my old binder just a couple days ago, just to kind of see where we were with everything and not much has changed as far as those concerns when it comes to land use development and patterns. And to your point, Councilmember Pinalosa, bring it down to South Bristol because you know what, it's the same as North Grand, you have these areas that are just, they're outdated, they're underutilized, and it's not about bringing in, you know, the Twenty-five Twenty-five projects and dropping them all over the city, it's about doing it the right way and the smart way. I think with what Mr. Tai did tonight in bringing this before us to receive and file, it wasn't for us to make a judgment on what is on these plan areas. And I too received a couple of calls from folks that were concerned about what was being proposed, but at this point, and I'll ask Mr. Tai, so from here, this is just a receiving file, you're letting us know where your staff is at, but we are not even close to being done with the exhaustive public process, right? I mean, could you just give us a couple of the highlights real quick, I mean, as far as the EIR, et cetera?
Right, so from here on out, as I mentioned, we'll be going through the adoption process and as part of that adoption process, we will have to complete a public hearing process. Some of the meetings that I mentioned on the Thirty-first and First is a part of that outreach, but in terms of the official public hearing process, there is the circulation of the EIR that the public has to review.
How long is that?
That's forty-five days that we would be circulating for the EIR and as part of that, we will be also providing information to the public about the general plan and the proposed changes. Just to address the concern about the proposed changes and whether or not it was outreach to the community, last year we did five separate meetings in five separate areas, inviting the public to meet with us, and I know some of the council members attended those as well. So each one of those areas, we strictly focused on the residents and worked with the neighborhood group to get the residents out, so I really appreciate that and I want to make sure that you know that that was done.
Thank you for that, Min. But it comes back to, brings me to the charter item. It's like, yeah, we did the outreach, but how many people participated? Because I know that in a lot of the outreach that we do in our city for numerous different things, it is, sometimes it's very low, barely any.
It was very well-attended, actually, and the attendance were up in the, you know, sixty to a hundred folks and beyond.
Which is good and obviously we can't with COVID, but, you know, we got to increase those efforts.
Absolutely.
And the reason I asked that, I said that is because, I mean, just with, back in March, or I think it was, yeah, it was March, February, when we had that update meeting over at Sketa Elementary about the Main Street Improvement Project, which I like a lot of it, that, this was after a year and three months of me on this council, I had not heard a single peep about that project, that, you know, improvement to that huge stretch of Main Street, at all, nothing. You know, and when people were at the meeting saying, this is the first we hear of it, we live, you know, a house away from Main Street, and I was sitting in the back room, I'm like, you know what, this is the first time I hear of it, which is embarrassing because I, you know, had met with planning numerous times over the general plan update, but that was never brought up, that was never, and, you know, and maybe that was my fault, but it's a, it's a thing where it's like, I know we do outreach and we do all the right things, but we know that the participation from our community as much is not there, not because they don't want to, but because they work a lot and they have multiple jobs and they can't find childcare and it's tough to attend these meetings a lot of the times. And I know we're doing, but we need to really, you know, I mean, I don't, we need to know the community we serve in order to, how can we best serve them? The charter review thing, I'll bring it up, the survey. The survey was great, we put it out there, but I went through the survey and I was like, well, no one would understand this unless you're a council member or a city attorney. So it's like, we got to know who we're serving when we're doing this outreach because that's the only way we're going to get, you know, people to participate. I mean, that's the, that's my opinion.
I completely agree and I think, you know, that plan that you're talking about, the public realm street improvement plan that was done many years ago, you know, the, between CDA and Public Works, they were able to re-secure the fund to basically implement that. So that project, I remember learning about it as well. So we did facilitate it with outreach to that community, but specifically when we outreach to this community regarding the general plan, and I attended that one, it was very well-attended and I participated with that, the room was full, I imagine it probably brought sixty to a hundred folks, so, you know, that was completed.
Let's go back to Councilor Becerra, he was not done.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilor Becerra.